Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Happy November. Before we call the meeting to order, I would like to read the city's land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather, and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood, is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabrielle Ngio Tongva and the Gabrielle Ngio Kish peoples. I'm calling the November 3, 2025 City Council meeting to order. It is 6:05 PM. We have a special guest joining us tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Will Sophia Goss please come up to lead us in the pledge?
By allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our tribe, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sophia. City Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Good evening. Councilmember Hane.
Present.
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
Here.
Mayor Byers.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move to a report of the closed session agenda. City Attorney?
Yes, good evening. The City Council convened a closed session at 5:00 PM this evening. There were no members of the public here to speak on the closed session agenda. The City Council took no reportable action on item number four. And with respect to item number five, Melvia Harris for the City of Los Angeles, the City Council decided unanimously to provide amicus support to this case which is challenging the City of Los Angeles's rent stabilization ordinance. In the case, Los Angeles was successful in the district court and the case has been appealed to the Ninth Circuit. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll move to an approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes from staff first on tonight's agenda?
No, Mayor. No changes from staff.
Terrific. We'll go to Councilmember Erickson for changes from council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start near the end in new business. Is there movement to move F2, the Fountain Avenue-Libreia Street traffic signal update?
Looks okay?
Yep. The San Vicente Boulevard between Melrose, the left turn movement study?
Some questions? Okay, we'll keep that.
The Emerald Village-West Hollywood Cannabis Focus Symposium? Thank you. I won't do my own. And then the public restrooms item, F9?
I have questions.
Okay. And then, Madam Mayor, hold on one second. Is there, I can't remember if Councilmember Meister before, an E4 with the advisory board frequency update? I think that was one of our ones we didn't know, but I think before you left, you said you were like, okay?
My questions were answered by staff. Basically...
Thank you.
My big question was, is the increase for every, all of the commissioners and board members? And the answer was yes. So I'm okay with it.
Great.
Okay, great. So E4.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Is it possible for us to move F, I believe it's F6?
Yes.
To consent? And F7 to consent?
The co-
Oh, F6 is the cosponsorship with Larchmont Charter School and F7 is cosponsorship of the LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce. And is it possible to move F8 to consent? The increased enhanced services program biohazard sanitation.
Okay.
And I'd like to pull B13.
Okay. The memorial and remembrance to lives lost? Okay. Any other changes? Okay. Seeing a motion. So just to capture that, we are pulling item B13 from consent and we're moving to consent items F2, F5, F6, F7, and F8.
F3 as well.
And F3 as well. Thank you.
And E4? E4 also?
And E4. Thank you.
I thought F3, isn't that the one Councilmember Meister had a question?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You were right with F2.
City Clerk, will you read it back to us? Thank you.
So I have, we are pulling and moving to excluded consent item B13. We are moving item E4, item F2, item F5, F6, F7, and F8 to consent. Is that all of them? Okay. And with that, we will take a motion in a second.
Okay. Thank you. We have an approved agenda for tonight. Can my colleagues quickly review the agenda for any Levine Act disclosures that you may have? Seeing none? None? Okay. Then we'll move on to adjournment motions. I believe Vice Mayor Heilman, you have a few adjournment motions for us tonight to get started.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to request that we adjourn in memory of Michael Miliff. Michael was a cherished member of the West Hollywood aquatics community and a multiple world record holding swimmer. He passed away recently. He came out in 1989 and returned to competitive swimming and joined West Hollywood Aquatics team. At the 1990 Gay Games, he broke two masters world records and won six gold medals. His story and his achievements are also highlighted in the documentary Light in the Water that discusses West Hollywood Aquatics team and highlights the remarkable accomplishments of that team. Beyond his accomplishments as a swimmer, Michael was also known for his kindness, his generosity, and the joy that he brought around everyone. We honor his memory and extend our deepest condolences to his husband Dean Pitchford, his children, his grandchildren, and all who were fortunate to know him. I'd also request that we adjourn in memory of Curtis Brown. Curtis was a longtime member of the city family who passed away recently. Curtis served as the city's recreation manager beginning in 1987. He played a pivotal role in shaping many of the programs that remain beloved today, including our farmer's market and our initial community garden program. We extend our heartfelt condolences to all who knew and loved Curtis. And I know that a number of people, if you're newer to the city, you didn't know Curtis, but Curtis had a big smile. He was larger than life and he could light up a room. And I know that he was missed when he left West Hollywood and he certainly will be missed now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I would like to adjourn in memory of Anthony Duarte, who died last week. He was a longtime Democratic activist friend, LGBTQ, elected official, and sending love to his husband John and their family and son. And was anyone going to also adjourn in memory of Anwar, who we lost on October 22nd? I would like to, for many of you that have been with the city for a long time, know that Anwar was a big part of our city family, our community, our division. He worked for the city for 23 years, from December 2001 to December 2024. He started as an accountant clerk, was promoted to accounting technician, and was promoted to several positions within rent stabilization and rent stabilization specialist, as well as a coordinator. He passed away peacefully in his sleep on Sunday, October 19th. Many of you remember his retirement services when we had them here in the chambers as well. So sending Anwar's family all of her love.
Thank you. Are there any other adjournment motions from council tonight? Seeing none. We'll move on to presentations. First, we'll recognize our stellar lead in the Pledge of Allegiance today, Sophia. Thank you so much again for joining us. We have a certificate for you. We'll take a photo. And for our next presentation, it's a special evening. We have the opportunity to recognize our many outgoing appointed officials tonight. It's truly an honor to recognize these individuals who have contributed to this community through their work and dedication to West Hollywood by serving on a city board or commission. I'll read the names of the outgoing appointed officials who are here this evening. I know we have a few with attendance and we ask that you please come up to the dais with us for a photo. We'll go ahead and read after that the rest of the outgoing appointed officials who may not be in chambers tonight. But I know with us tonight, we have Barbara Meltzer, who served on the Human Services Commission as Councilmember Erickson's appointee. Yeah. They're receiving a plaque for their contributions. Yeah, show it off. Thanks, Barbara. We have Dean Shemenzki, who served on the Older Adult Advisory Board as an at-large participant. There's Dean. Thanks, Dean. I believe we have Anthony Daniel Padilla, who served on the Transgender Advisory Board tonight with us. And we should have Stevie S. Sherry, who served on the Women's Advisory Board as Seppi Shine's appointee.
There she is. Hey.
And I believe that's all who are in attendance with us unless I see quick- Oh, Stephen Davis joined. Wonderful. Stephen Davis, come on up. He served on the Human Services Commission? And I see Kimberly Winnick also joined us, who served on the Transportation and Mobility Commission. Is there anyone else in the crowd? I don't want to miss you. This is a very fun "come on down" sort of moment. Okay, we'll go join this illustrious group of commissioners and board members for a photo and then we'll come back up and recognize the rest.
I can do this really quickly. I just really wanted to thank John Heilman for appointing me in November of 1993. And he took a risk on a guy he didn't know very much about, and I hope I didn't disappoint. And I would also like to thank John D'Amico, who appointed me throughout his terms on City Council and the council at large for appointing me the last time. Thank you all very much. It's been a real pleasure.
Thank you all so much. I will read the rest of the outgoing appointed officials. Tonight is the night where we recognize this transition in leadership in our city and I want to do everyone the justice of making sure their name is acknowledged and their contributions are acknowledged. So we are also recognizing Herman Simakovsky, who served on the Russian-speaking advisory board; Mallory J. Robinson, who served on the Transgender Advisory Board; Adam Darvish, who served on the Transportation and Mobility Commission; Cameron Faber, who served on the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission, along with Lindsay Deaton on the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission; Wesley Schwartz, who served on the Disabilities Advisory Board with Magnus Mann; Amy Ziv, or Zvi, sorry, who served on Historic Preservation Commission; and Gail Ostergren, who served on Historic Preservation Commission. We have Richard C. Leroy, who served on the Older Adult Advisory Board. On the Planning Commission, we had Eric J. Matos and Michael A. Lombardi. We have Robert M. Saltzman from the Public Safety Commission, along with Joy Freiberg and Adam Arimanian, who also served on Public Safety Commission; Alex Paris, the Rent Stabilization Commission, along with Tina Moore and John F. Adams, Rent Stabilization Commission; Alex Tolochenko, who served on the Russian-speaking Advisory Board, along with Eugenie Kovonovsky on the Russian-speaking Advisory Board. Then we have, for the Transgender Advisory Board, June Panushkin, Shashana Baum, and A.J. Singleton. On Transportation and Mobility Commission, we have Alexander Basely and Adam Kroll. And then on the Women's Advisory Board, several members, Kat Lockwood, Saaji Lazarus, Shanara Good, and Melanie Elman. And then on the Social Justice Advisory Board, who's our final board, we had Tiandre Pierre, Shannon Morton, Rebecca Batanko, Kareem Abey. So my colleagues will have an opportunity to say a few remarks as many of these commissioner board members were appointed by them. But just on behalf of the entire city, we thank you so much for your many contributions, the time served, the many meetings, the attention to the details and the agenda and all the care you brought into this role on behalf of your respected communities and advisory boards. We appreciate you so much and thank you very much for your contributions. Anybody like to step up with any additional remarks?
I think you said it all, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your service to the city and it takes a lot to do everything that you do on all the different boards that we have and they require a lot of time. So thank you very much. And I know Barbara's in the room and every time I see Barbara, I just have to say I just so appreciate your service to the city and the inspiration you cause for so many of the work that we're doing right now and at the county that you're doing currently. So, you know, I always have to shout out Barbara Meltzer, required by law, because that's our friendship contract, but I just love you so much and thank you for the work that you do on behalf of everyone.
Thank you. You know? Okay. Well, thank you all so much again. We'll move forward with our agenda. Tonight, our next item is the public comment period. And I see a number of folks already signed up. The City Council values your comments. However, pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes with two minutes allotted for each speaker. This public comment period is to address the City Council on consent calendar items, other agenda items if the member of the public cannot be present at the time the item is considered, or items of general interest within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Another period is also reserved for general comment later in the meeting for those that could not be heard at this time. And as we have a public hearing tonight, public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of the hearing. City Clerk, I see we have 12 members of the public signed up currently for public comment. Are there any in Zoom? Zero on Zoom? Terrific. Okay, so we'll get started. I'll go ahead and call a few people up at once. Please be ready when your name is called. I see we have Michael Selditch, followed by Chad Ekman, followed by Stephanie Harker.
Mayor? Can I just say one thing?
One thing.
Not a public comment, but I'll be putting on my sunglasses here and there and it's not disrespectful. It's, my eye is very, very sensitive to the lights that are coming right at us, so I just wanted to show that. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you. After you. Thank you, Michael.
I'd like to thank the City Council for approving B8, the AIDS Monument Project, and recognizing its importance to the community. On another note, I was disappointed by Mr. Erickson's condescending comments on October 6 regarding opposition to the ill-conceived Fountain Project. He whined about having to listen to more public comments and once again maliciously accused opponents of being indifferent to safety. He gleefully cited more fatal crashes to support his argument, yet when doing so conveniently ignores a critical reality. All of the reported 2025 crashes on Fountain Avenue between Libreia and La Cienega involving pedestrians and cyclists occurred at intersections. These publicly reported incidents clearly show that intersections, not mid-block lanes, are where pedestrians and cyclists are most at risk. A protected bike lane does nothing to reduce crashes at intersections, yet the city continues to act as if it will magically solve the problem. Adding more traffic lights or stop signs or speed bumps would address these dangers much more effectively and at a lower cost, rather than creating chaos and congestion by reducing- by reducing lanes. I'm sorry, Mr. Erickson, that you're inconvenienced by having to listen to the concerns of your constituents. You may think this is a done deal, but this fight is far from over. Thank you.
Chad Ekman, followed by Stephanie Harker, followed by Pia Rosner.
Hello, my name's Chad Ekman. I help run a flagging social group here in L.A. called SoCal Flaggers. I just wanted to voice my support for the cosponsorship agreement between the city and the lavender effect to hold this flagging event in February, which is item B-7 on the agenda. For those who don't know, flagging is an expressive dance with tie-dyed silk flags that has been danced in gay bars and nightclubs for decades. It's meant to celebrate queer joy, and this event will help us do just that. Our goal with this event is to help bring the community together and share this art form while keeping the tradition of flagging alive in West Hollywood. Yeah, so thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Stephanie Harker, followed by Pia Rosner, Rosner, apologies, and then Tom Demille after that.
Good evening, Stephanie Harker, City of West Hollywood. I want to congratulate the entire team for, at long last, being able to bring the AIDS Monument to fruition. It's been a long time coming, and although none of us have forgotten, it'll be a good reminder every time we drive by to remember those days and those times and to honor those that we lost. On F-6, which was moved to consent regarding money to the schools, you know, I look around and I see hundreds of thousands being spent on a ice skating rink and pumpkins in the pool, all fun, but I think we need to, and this does suggest upping the amount, I think we need to put it way up for education, for promotion of events that the schools are doing, all of the schools. We have got to put the investment into our youth while we still can. And also, we're having an issue on Vista Street regarding the street lamps that are out. I've discussed this with Helen Collins and with Danny, and apparently it's Southern California Edison's issue, but it's been dark there for months, and I mean dark. It's, you know, we have troubles around the park, so I don't know if there's temporary lights they can attach to the poles or something, but it's very scary there at night, especially in this time, this day and age. Also, briefly, Andrew Solomon came to this podium and said he had gone back and looked at some of the Fountain Avenue discussions, so I thought, well, that's probably a good idea. So I went back and looked at November of 2023, in which Councilmember Meister asked John Keigho, did you give the residents on Fountain a choice? And he said, no, we only discussed Fountain. Thank you.
Pia Rosner, followed by Tom Demille, followed by Kevin Burton.
Hi, I'm Pia Rosner. I represent the Friends of West Hollywood Elementary, which is an all-parent volunteer nonprofit board. This year, I represent 289 students from TK through 5th grade, and I want to talk a little bit about the expansion of the grants in the schools program, which is item B-11. We're the lucky recipients of $3,000, but that definitely falls short. As you know, L.A. USD has taken away our music program in their budget. We spend approximately $48,000 a year to provide music for our students, including orchestra and providing instruments for kids that can't afford it, so expanding that grant to $6,000 would be much appreciated, and hopefully in the future, this is just the beginning. That's it. Thank you.
Tom Demille, followed by Kevin Burton, followed by Scott Schmidt.
Yeah, my name is Tom Demille, West Hollywood. What would I do if I was a council member? I've been thinking about that. Of course, I've been on the ballot four times, but I think that I've come up with the answer to that, and that is, our residents, our constituents, want their city back. They really want their city back. They're not hurt anymore. They're not making the decisions anymore. I don't think it's up to the four or five people that are up there to make the decisions for $37,000. Clearly, they don't have all the brains in the city, but I'm not here to knock that. I'm here to invite people that have good ideas in our city, like making sure that that intersection of La Brea and Fountain is taken care of, like that's why I came up here, F-2. And it's important, because a lot of kids cross that street. Let's make it the state, if we're going to do Fountain over, and I know it's dear to you, John, I love you very much, I'm not going to knock any of you guys, you have a hard job, but if we're going to do Fountain over, let's make La Brea and Fountain, and also La Brea and Santa Monica state-of-the-art, let's do them both with talking, crosswalks and stuff. Let's get to the crosswalks. I can't go anywhere in the city with this, all right? I'm in the street. I'm literally in the street. If I was your council member, I would do all the sidewalks over in our city systematically, and I would put, I would put our history on the sidewalks, every single gay person that helped us. Moreover, I would put music on Sunset of all the rock bands from 5:00 to 11:00, a little bit louder than the traffic, but not loud enough to hear a horn beep at you, and it's not going to bother the residents, it's going to make foot traffic. This was a walkable city, that's how we bragged about it, and it's not wa, no one's walking. Let's make people walk again on Sunset by putting commemorative things in the sidewalk that commemorate all the bands that have ever played there. Let's make it walkable again. Let's make it interesting again to walk our city. Thank you very much.
Kevin Burton, followed by Scott Schmidt, followed by Marquita Thomas.
Good evening, Council Kevin Burton, West Hollywood. I also want to indicate my support for item F-2, which is a protected left turn, which is a protected left turn at the intersection of Fountain and La Brea. This subject has been discussed for many years, recommended to the Transportation Committee and by the commission several years ago. It's been on the work plan for a few years, so I'm pleased to see it is going to come to fruition. It's been hard won, and the protected left turn means a left turn green arrow. People are familiar with this. It helps the flow of traffic, but most importantly, proves safety for at least part of the cycle by separating left-turning vehicles from oncoming traffic, and that's both vehicles and bicycles. And pedestrians moving in both directions, critically important. That's only for part of the cycle, then it goes to a green ball where they can cross paths, and to prevent that, one would have to then follow the green left arrow with a red left arrow, which would be even safer. I don't know if that's been discussed for this project, but kudos to the city for moving forward on this safety enhancement. Thank you.
Scott Schmidt, followed by Marquita Thomas, followed by Victor Omachenko.
Hello and good evening, Scott Schmidt, resident of West Hollywood. I'm here to speak about item F-5, which would be the city cosponsorship of a symposium and movie screening here in council chambers on February 28. I want to thank Councilmember Hang for bringing this item forward, and to the council for your longstanding support of this industry. We're doing better than the rest of the state, wish it were better, but doing things like this will help bring, focus on West Hollywood as the cultural home of cannabis in Southern California and as a global destination. In the past month, we were at the International Gay and Lesbian Travel Association, sharing an activation space with the Pride House team, got to share lots of ideas and brainstorm about what we can do during the World Cup and during the Olympics, which are coming up, which is amazing. We also were at Spinning Sunset and out there in the community. And in the next month, we invite all of the council, as well as the public, to join us at Mickey's on the 20th for the Queen, the Emerald Village Drag Contest. Voting is open and goes until next Monday, when we'll announce six finalists. And we will, with your adoption of this item tonight, on the 4th of December, we're going to be announcing this event at MJ BizCon at their first-ever LGBT and ally smoke sesh at the Niu Wu Lounge, which will be a lot of fun. And the last kind of update that I want to give you is, next week, I will be a judge at the Amsterdam Coffee Shop Award, representing West Hollywood. So our city really is arriving on the global stage as a destination for this industry, and we're planting the seeds for long-term success entirely because of your support. So thank you, Councilmember Hang, for bringing this item forward, to the staff for getting us there, and to all of you for your continued support. Thank you.
Marquita Thomas, followed by Victor Omachenko, followed by Ed Holman.
Good evening, Mayor Byers and esteemed members of council. I'm Marquita Thomas. I'm the founding president and CEO of the California LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce, and I want to thank you for your support of the LGBTQ Procurement Summit. California leads the nation in minority contracting, and this procurement summit will ensure that LGBTQ-certified suppliers have a seat at the table. We will have panels on how LGBTQ small businesses can contract with higher learning, with the major games that are coming, LA 28, public utilities, and state contracting. Last time we did this event, we had over 125 people, and we're looking to exceed that number in January, so we're very excited about this event and really appreciate your support, and we look forward to seeing you on January 28. Thank you.
Victor Omachenko, followed by Ed Holman, followed by Alec White.
Good evening, Council. Victor Omachenko, West Hollywood resident, here to speak about voter participation, a cornerstone of our democracy that's facing challenge and opportunity. California has made voting easier than ever. Registered voters receive mail-in ballots. We have same-day registration, yet in the 2024 general election, over 1 million fewer Californians voted compared to 2020, and the steepest declines were among the young, the low-income, and benefit-dependent residents. These are the very people most affected by government decisions, including the current federal shutdown and continued funding for essential programs like medical subsidies and food stamps, and yet these folks are underrepresented at the ballot box, but there's a glimmer of hope as we approach tomorrow's special election. Proposition 50, which proposes temporary redistricting in response to partisan gerrymandering in other states, has sparked renewed interest. Early voting is already underway, and voting centers in West Hollywood are seeing steady activity since opening on October 24. And ballot boxes are being used at City Hall, at Plummer Park, and right outside here on the street, outside of these chambers, you can drop off your ballot, and that shows it's a sign that our community is engaged. Proposition 50 is more than a map, it's a reminder that representation matters. So while access doesn't guarantee participation and outreach doesn't always guarantee awareness, we in West Hollywood can lead by example. Let's continue to support civic education, simplify ballot language, and ensure that every resident, especially those most impacted by policy, feels empowered to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Holman, followed by Alec White, followed by Nick Renteria.
Good evening, Ed Holman, resident of West Hollywood, 29 years. Take a quick pause from politics for a second. Remember, remember, the 5th of November. On November 5, 1995, two guys went on their first date. They went to Amigos Restaurant, now employees-only, for dinner, and Mickey's for after-dinner drinks. In November 2000, they registered as domestic partners with the city of West Hollywood. A year later, on November 3, 2001, 24 years ago tonight, they had a commitment ceremony on the steps of the Thalberg Building at Sony Pictures Studio in Culver City and a reception in the Rita Hayworth Dining Room. To this date, it's the only same-sex ceremony to take place there. Flash forward to June 17, 2008, the day it became legal for same-sex couples in California to get married, they did exactly that, and it landed them on the cover of Advocate Magazine. Flash forward to now, in two days, it will be November 5, 2025. These two guys who went on that date on that night back in 1995 were celebrating their 30th anniversary. Hey, kid, we were in our 20s when we met, we're in our 50s now, so if you stick this out for another 30, we'll be in our 80s. Let's do it. I love you, John Kramer. Happy 30th anniversary.
Happy 30th. That was wonderful. Alec White, followed by Nick Renteria, I believe is our last speaker, signed up currently. If you intend to speak, please sign up. Go for it, Alec.
Awesome. Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Heilmann, and members of the City Council. So I'll be brief, just want to speak in a couple items. So F-1, I definitely support aligning West Hollywood's income and red schedules the state standards. However, I do have a few concerns around the new fees and higher inclusionary rates and extending the ordinance to small and senior projects. I'm just really worried it will potentially discourage development, especially among smaller mixed-income buildings, and I really like to see where prioritized policies that are encouraging more mixed-income housing, I just see you can make it a lot easier for younger folks to move into WeHo. And with F-4, as a resident for eight years who loves our small businesses, I'm definitely very excited to see that, and I am very strongly in support of it. We've got to make sure we're streamlining permits and standards regulations. I've had a few friends who've actually tried to open businesses in WeHo, many of them successful, but just they've want to make sure it's going quickly and efficiently so they can open and thrive, and we can all attend them and really celebrate them. And I know F-8 got moved to consent, but I just wanted to just raise your support for this, think it's a great way to keep our workers safe while keeping our businesses safe and clean as well. And last but not least, really appreciated Victor mentioning the political involvement of young people, because right here we have the Young Democrat of the Year, Chelsea, Mayor Byers, received the Young Democrat of the Year Award from the L.A. County Young Democrats for all her work making West Hollywood very inclusive for young people and supporting young people throughout our city. So I wanted to congratulate you again, and thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Alec. Nick Renteria, I believe will be our final speaker, and we have citizen position slips to read after that.
Good evening, City Council. First, I want to say shout out to our city for hosting the best Halloween party. I am so proud to be a citizen of a city that's able to throw such high-caliber events. That being said, I do have a couple critiques I want to throw out there. My friends and I were really excited to take the pickup, because we're all huge public transit fans. We were really sad to see it get stuck in horrible traffic its entire route, which kind of defeats the purpose of having a pickup service like that. So maybe going forward, we could look into adding some sort of express lane for just the pickup, just to speed up that service, and that was happening as far back as Crescent Heights. From Crescent Heights forward towards where the actual event was being hosted, we decided to walk, and as we were walking, pretty much immediately, the sidewalks became too busy to really stay on the sidewalk, so people started getting in the bike lane, and even a little bit more dangerously started moving out more towards the street. I think we should look into maybe trying to figure out ways that we can expand the sidewalks capacity in the long term, but also in the short term, we could look at maybe removing some of that parking and making that sidewalk a little larger as people start to approach. And I also think in general, the event was amazing, and I wish we would actually expand the amount of space it was taking up, so that way we could really take advantage of having all of these people come to our city. I think it got a little bit cramped, but it was still really fun. Yeah, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I believe that's our final chamber and speakers. Thank you all so much for your public comments. We'll move to the citizen position slips now. Yes, we received two citizen position slips in support of agenda item B-11 from Martha Ortega and Lindsay Corcoran. Terrific, thank you. Then we'll move on to the city manager's report. Thank you, City Manager Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers and community members. Just a few announcements this evening. I am going to continue on the Halloween celebration. The city hosted our annual Halloween carnival, and as it has in previous years, tens of thousands of people came out to Santa Monica Boulevard to participate in this iconic West Hollywood event. I'd like to take a moment to thank all the city staff, our public safety partners, and all of our community partners who participated in the planning and execution of this year's event. Their tireless efforts and collaboration ensured a safe, seamless, and memorable event for the entire community. Victor stole my thunder a bit on Election Day, but tomorrow, our Election Day is tomorrow, Tuesday, November 4. The city of West Hollywood is hosting two vote centers at Fiesta Hall in Plummer Park and at the Aquatics Center, Aquatics and Recreation Center in West Hollywood Park. The vote centers are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8, I'm sorry, yes, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can also drop off a vote-by-mail ballot at any city, any of the city's three official drop box locations, which are in front of the community center at Plummer Park, along Sweetsr Avenue, behind City Hall. Park, along Sweetsr Avenue, behind City Hall, and along San Vincent State Boulevard, just south of the library. For more information or assistance, please visit www.laboat.gov or contact the city clerk's office at 323-848-6800. The city is proud to announce the grand opening of Stories, the AIDS Monument, the partnership with the Foundation for the AIDS Monument. We would like to invite the community to the official grand opening ceremony on Sunday, November 16th at 4:00 PM. The event will take place in the outdoor courtyard of the Pacific Design Center in West Hollywood, across the street from the AIDS Monument. For more information and to RSVP, please visit aidsmonument.ebright.com, and more information is available in the city's calendar. The city is also looking forward to hosting the annual West Hollywood Day and State of the Community Celebration on Monday, November 24th at 6:00 PM in the Aquatics and Recreation Center. Please join us as we celebrate 41 years of cityhood. The theme for this year's event is One City, Many Stories. We will use this opportunity to highlight various projects focused on preserving and celebrating the history of the city, of our city and community, showcasing how these stories are integral to the identity of West Hollywood today. For more information, please RSVP and to RSVP, RSVP, please visit the city's calendar at www.weho.org. And finally, we just want to provide a brief update on some of the impacts of the federal shutdown. The federal government shutdown is disrupting the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, also known as SNAP. The city of West Hollywood is ensuring community members can continue to have access to healthy food through the following three programs. Seeds of Hope provides fresh produce and pantry items to every Tuesday at 10:00 AM to noon at Plummer Park, and starting November 13th, every Thursday from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM at West Hollywood Park. Jewish Family Services provides hot lunches for seniors every Monday through Friday at Plummer Park and operates, and operates Savon Food Pantry pop up every Tuesday from 10:00 AM to noon at Plummer Park. Project Angel Food delivers meals to community members living with HIV and AIDS and other serious illnesses. World Harvest provides grocery vouchers available through the city's food, the city's food access program, redeemable at the West Hollywood Harvest Warehouse near La Brea and the 10 freeway. Additionally, LA County has more than 900 food pantries coordinated by the LA Region Food Bank. Visit lafoodbank.org/findfood or donate directly to support that effort. The city will also be sharing this information through news releases and will activate WEHO Responds to encourage community donations. For details of any of these programs, call the Human Services Division at 323-848-6510. Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have two questions, David. Thank you so much for the report on what we're doing to address the fact that people are not able to get their SNAP benefits. I'm wondering if it makes sense to do a targeted mailing to those members of the city who get rebates for their rent stabilization fees and others who we know are accessing existing social services. So I'm wondering if that can be added to the outreach and the information that we're delivering. And the second question has to do with the light situation on Vista. I'm hoping you heard those comments, and I know that Helen and Danny are working on that, but I hope you can come up with a temporary solution until the time that Edison is able to make the necessary repairs.
Any other comments or questions for City Manager? Terrific. Thank you so much, David. Oh, go ahead, Councilor Meister, please.
There's one, and maybe I missed it, but regarding the SNAP and all of that, are we doing anything on our website to try to encourage donations to food banks?
Yes, yes, we are adding information on the WEHO Responds page, which we usually use for disasters.
Okay, thank you.
And I will say that Mayor Byers and I volunteered at the West Side Food Bank. Was that just last week?
Yeah.
Jeez. And they are in need of volunteers, so if anyone is out there and able to go volunteer, please contact them, because they are trying to get as much out there, and they are overwhelmed, and their staff are overwhelmed because of the funding cuts. So if you're able to go volunteer, maybe take all that anger and rage and do it.
Thank you. Okay, okay. We'll move on to the fiscal impact on consent calendar tonight. City Clerk, what are we looking at?
Thank you, Mayor. With the exclusion of Item B13 and the addition of Items E4, F2, F5, F6, F7, and F8, the fiscal report is 1,148,462 in expenditures, 4,938 in revenues, and 33,282 in waived fees.
Can I get a motion to adopt tonight's consent calendar? There is one already. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Sorry, things are sticking a little bit for me. I think we have a vote on the, right? Everyone sees that? I just don't. Okay. We'll move to Item C1, our public hearing. Not sure why my computer's sticking a little bit. Just a second. Okay, so we will now move to the public hearing, Item C1, review and approve proposed amendment to the Sunset Boulevard off-site signage policy and adopt the CEQA addendum to the 2019 negative declaration. The public hearing is now open. Are there any disclosures from council members? No? Okay. City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law.
Thank you. Will the staff representative please introduce yourself and present the staff report? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Byers and members of the council. My name's Jennifer Alkire. I'm the Assistant Director of Community Development. I'm joined here by the Director of Community Development, Nick Marisich. I have my colleague Jennifer Davis, who is Contract Senior Planner on Zoom, and she will be presenting. We are also joined by our consultant team consisting of representatives from DUDEC, Farr and Peers, and Francis Crane Associates. And with that, I will let Jennifer Davis take it away. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Byers and Vice Mayor Heilman, Jennifer Davis, and fellow council members. Tonight, we are looking at minor amendments to the Sunset Boulevard off-site signage policy, commonly called the billboard policy, which is also Chapter 8 of the Sunset specific plan. Just wanted to put this into context a little bit. In 1996, Chapter 8 of the specific plan was adopted and it's entitled "Billboards and Arts and Advertising." Then in 2019, we replaced that chapter with the Sunset Boulevard Offsite Signage Policy, the Billboard Policy. And this policy became the guiding document for all arts and off-site signage along the Sunset Strip. Now in 2025, we are proposing minor amendments to that policy, and these amendments clarify and strengthen various light and glare requirements principally. An overview of the amendments before we begin. So amendments to Section 5, Lighting and Operations. Basically, these are standards added to further reduce light trespass from the billboards. Amendments to Chapter 6, the Architectural Lighting. This section is to clarify what architectural lighting is, that it's not part of the billboard sign, that it's there to highlight the elements of the architecture of the building. And then amendments to Section 9, which is the Definitions Chapter, mostly adding definitions that clarify things like luminance and illuminance. These, I just want to touch on the CEQA analysis and the lighting study, very important documents here tonight. The original lighting study was done in 2019 as part of the policy adoption. That lighting study was used to inform and to create standards for that billboard policy when it was adopted. The lighting standard, study has now been updated, and it's updated to review the increased number and size of billboards, and that is part of your packet tonight. These updated standards, updated standards from this new lighting study have been incorporated in these policy amendments that you're reviewing this evening. The recommendations, the lighting study recommendations principally are two. They are to reduce the maximum luminance, and that is the light shining away from the billboard, of signs exceeding 1,000 square feet. They also limit the sign orientation relative to the distance from residentially zoned properties. These two recommendations help to prevent signs from creating excessive light trespass, and the proposed amendments incorporate these two lighting recommendations, among others. First and foremost, or probably the principal change to this Section 5, is a chart, which basically requires as the billboard size, sign face increases in square footage, the luminance or candela per meter square need to reduce. So as it gets bigger, the light needs to decrease. In addition, excuse me, in addition, the billboards abutting residentially zoned properties need to be oriented away from the residential zoned properties towards Sunset. So I'll try to simplify this diagram, but the more perpendicular the sign is to Sunset, the further away it needs to be from the residentially zoned property. And in addition, the angle and setback from the residentially zoned property is regulated. The more parallel, the less the setback from the residential property line. Amendments to the, my screen is being covered up here, to Section 6, Architectural Lighting. Principally, as I said, these are to clarify that architectural lighting is separate and differentiate from the billboard lighting. It's to highlight building surfaces, not to project outward, and it clarifies that services used for architectural lighting cannot generate revenue. Section 9, the definition section. The most important definitions that were revised or refined in this chapter are illuminance and luminance, and we have included diagrams that help explain what these are. We also redefined architectural lighting and added a definition for off-site advertising signage. Staff, does one, does one recommend a minor change to what we presented here tonight in the resolution to Section 5A4 of that resolution? This amendment would allow the applicant, an applicant to request an alternative approach to specific luminance and illuminance standards, including the angle and distance that I talked about earlier, and the candela maximums that I talked about earlier. Just like to take a minute to read it into the record, should the council like to adopt this amendment. So let me just take that time right now. So as an alternative to the A1D, A2, and A3 standards above, the applicant may propose a site-specific solution with alternative placement, orientation, size, or treatment options, and this solution may be considered if supported by substantial evidence in the form of a project-specific lighting analysis prepared by a qualified lighting professional and demonstrating to the satisfaction of the Community Development Director that the substitute design would not exceed the established lighting threshold of 1.4-foot candles at any residentially zoned property line. So we would remove the words "standard" and the number 3. We, staff also conducted two additional studies. These are sort of outside of the CEQA, but the traffic study analysis was conducted because during the time when we were receiving public comments to the amendments to the policy, we did understand that many residents had concerns about driver distraction with the full-motion billboards. So we had Farr and Peers conduct a traffic safety analysis, and principally that focused on two components, a research review of all of the studies on billboards and distraction, and then a very site-specific collision analysis of the Sunset Strip, where it compared crash patterns on Sunset with three other major urban corridors in the LA area. This comparative, comparative analysis did not reveal any trends suggesting that numerous full-motion billboards lead to a greater number of collisions compared with the three other urban corridors, which had fewer or no billboards. In addition, City Council did request a wildlife analysis, and that focused on the artificial light at night and the impacts of new billboards on wildlife north of Sunset. The increase in ambient lighting would not significantly change, there would be a slight increase in ambient lighting, but it would not significantly change the existing ambient nighttime light in hillside areas. A slight change of 0.01-foot candle would be the increase. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the proposed amendments that I read into the record, and adopt the addendum to the 2019 negative declaration. Just in closing, I'd like to say at the last city council meeting, several residents submitted comments regarding this item. Staff has reviewed those comments and has provided council with written responses to the most technical of these. We have in chambers tonight, as Jen mentioned, representatives from the environmental consultant, the lighting consultant, and the traffic consultant. On Zoom, we have the senior biologist as well. All of these experts are available, SMI, to answer any questions you might have about the amendments, the CEQA analysis, the lighting study, the traffic study, and the wildlife study. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for clarity? We do have two people signed up to speak on this item. Okay, so we'll go to the public, and then we'll come back to the council for questions. Thank you. I see our first speaker is Wendy Goldman.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, members of the public. I would like to respectfully disagree with part of the findings of the consultant, and specifically, in Page 5 of the staff report, quote, "Sign faces abutting any residentially zoned property will need to be oriented towards Sunset Boulevard." My question is, if the sign faces are oriented towards Sunset Boulevard, won't that affect residents on the opposite side of Sunset? I didn't hear anything about what if, so I would like to clarify that. On Page 6, regarding the billboard traffic safety memo, the safety study was prepared to address some concerns that have arisen due to new billboards along Sunset Boulevard. And then it goes on to say that they did the comparative collision analysis with three other major corridors. And I fail to understand how similar those other major corridors are to Sunset Strip, which is iconic and individual and has very little in common with other major corridors, except that it's gridlocked. Finally, the point of clarification over the implementing safe street design to increase driver attentiveness in general, wherever and whenever possible, this overgeneralization does not indicate that there is a consideration of any balance between commercial interests and road safety. It implies that the profits from digital billboards outweigh the cost of distracted driving. Current number of billboards has increased dramatically over the past five years, overlapping tall walls and increased glare. Why is it the council has ignored the obvious danger to pedestrians and motorists caused by these ever-growing billboards? Can't the revenue be found from other sources that do less harm to motorists and residents?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Aaron Green.
Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Heilman, members of the council. My name is Aaron Green with the Afraid Consulting Group. I just wanted to come and speak for a few minutes about the diligent work that staff did on this. This policy amendment that's before you this evening, as staff discussed, is about This policy amendment that's before you this evening, as staff discussed, is about adding additional refinements and restrictions to the program. It's really about some of the lessons that we have learned. I want to thank staff for taking the time. This has been a process, when you combine the policy along with the SEQA analysis, that's been going on for about two years now, and it's been a really thoughtful and engaged process. This policy before you tonight, and I think this is important, only impacts existing applications that have been on file with the city for years. Most of these have been on file with the city since 2021 or 2022. So what this does is it takes those current applications, makes sure that additional guidelines and restrictions are applied to them, and then allows those projects that have been pending to hopefully move forward, getting to the next stage in the process, which is the Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee. So I just want to express my thanks to staff, the consultant team. This has been something that, we don't see this level of study, whether it's for development projects or signage in other cities. It's really been robust, it's been thorough, it's been responsive. I just look at the, the report that staff mentioned that was written in response to comments that came in last week. I think staff has really gone above and beyond certainly its requirements, but also the need to, and desirous of making sure that there is full disclosure about what this is and what this is. And so, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you both for your comments. I know we did get a number of public comments submitted on this item before, and I appreciate knowing that staff's taken the time to address those. We'll come back to council for questions. I think Councilmember Meister, are you ready to jump in?
Sure. So on, on page 247 of our packet, which is B3 of the Amendment on Transitions, I know that this applies to static digital signs, but can you explain how we require this and then allow full motion? Does that make sense?
Can you, can you refer again to what part of the?
B3 of the amendment on the transition.
B3 of the amended language, okay.
Yep. It's page 247 of our packet.
And it looks like Jennifer Davis on Zoom is ready to jump in too.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm looking at, hold on just a second, pulling that up.
It's, it's the section on, it's B, Off-Site Advertising Sign Control and Transitions, and it's number three. And it says, "Each image displayed on a static billboard," they changed from digital to static, "shall not be refreshed more, more often than once every eight seconds." This means that the content image must stay in place for at least eight seconds. It can stay longer, but it cannot change again in less than eight seconds. And I guess, you know, when this was originally put into place, we didn't have full motion in this policy. And so I'm just wondering, I mean, full motion doesn't stay in place for eight seconds?
Right. And this, you're right, the, the policy was adopted in 2019 and we knew far less than we know now about billboards and how they operate and their technology. You can see that in that number three, digital is crossed out because in the billboard policy, almost everything was called digital and we soon found the need to define what digital and full motion and static and traditional were. So in this case, this number three only applies to static billboards, not full motion billboards.
Oh, I understand that.
Full motion billboards move much faster than that.
Yeah, I guess my, my question is why? I mean, if we allow full motion.
The nature of a static billboard is that it's not full motion. It's categorized differently, it's valued differently, it's a sort of different billboard type.
Okay. On item, on section D, renewable energy use, are we requiring that signs that haven't been approved yet have to come from like solar energy sources?
All, all of the billboards are beholden to this. This has been in the billboard policy from the beginning and it's, it talks about the clean energy tier and the city's energy provider. That is in place when the billboard is approved. So I think that is not a static thing. I think it changes over time, but they must adhere to that when they're approved. I don't know if that answered your question.
So is it solar then? Solar powered?
Not specifically solar. But some of the billboards do use solar.
I just want to add also that if you look at the strike through and underline, that section was already in place. What's being changed there is changing the terminology from billboard to off-site advertising sign and removing the clause that says, "To the extent feasible," so that it's a more forceful an action of requiring them to participate in clean energy sources.
Great. And we, you talk a little bit about alternate projects, and I know I've asked this before, but how many of these projects that have been approved, like what percentage of those projects are alternate projects? And were they alternate projects when they were recommended by the panel? Or, because my understanding originally was that the alternate project category was meant to be sort of the exception, not the rule, but it seems that there are an awful lot of alternate projects that are much bigger, right?
That is a very confusing part of this policy, was not, I think, clearly defined at the start. What we, we say they are alternative standards project, that they're seeking a sort of modification to one or more of the standards. And so that's an alternative standards project. The two, alternative project would be something more in the lines of like Sunset Spectacular. But an alternative standards project, as we are defining it and working through this process with all of the different applications that have come through, we're saying at any time, something is higher, larger, different from what the standard is, then it's an alternative project.
And were these, but what I'm asking also is, were these projects, alternate projects, when they went to the panel? Or did they sort of evolve into alternate projects because of some other reason?
The Design Excellence Committee had a very set group of criteria to review those concept awards, and they were, at that point, just concept awards. So they were looking at economic development and was it a good design, was it good for the city in general? That was sort of, that Design Excellence Committee was sort of the ticket into being able to apply. And only after the billboards were actually submitted as applications would they put through a more rigorous review from a staff level in terms of how did they meet different standards of the billboard? The Design Excellence Committee was never, was never charged with doing that level of review. So they didn't really say was something alternative to the standards or not. That was not part of their purview.
I'm going to jump in real quick too. Thank you, Jennifer. I think there was a category in those days when we had that process that was the alternative submission, and that is different than the alternative projects standards that's in the policy. So those are two different things. And so any project, regardless of whether they, they were approved under one submission category or another, has the opportunity through the policy to apply for alternative standards. It's unfortunate that that word alternative was used in both of those contexts, and it has caused a lot of confusion over the years, I think, but that's, I think, it still does to this day, obviously. But that's, that's what's going on. So, so some projects that came in under a different submission category are moving through as alternative standards projects, meaning that they are, as you said, going, going bigger than what is prescribed here or having other different modifications of the standards. And that's allowed under, under the policy in, in section three, under Administrative Procedures, letter B, alternative projects.
Okay. On appendix E1, which is the traffic study, and that's on our page 1306, on page four, what I'd like to know is whether there are any studies looking at the position of the billboard versus the road, like the angle of it, how it was hitting the road? Because obviously, there's been a concern about traffic safety, and I know that there are a lot of traffic studies that were referenced, way too many for any one person to look at. So.
Yeah, I would, I would defer to Farr and Pierce on this one. They did look at those, they did do reviews of all the research and also of the ones that the commenter pointed to. So I would ask Danielle Campress from Farr and Pierce to answer that question more specifically for you. She's in the council chambers.
Yes. We did not look at any specific studies that looked at the billboard angle relative to the road and how that contributes to driver distraction, but there was one study that reviewed traffic or billboards in relation to traffic signs and traffic signals and the relative position to those and how that can contribute to driver distraction. For example, if a billboard is placed directly behind a traffic signal, it is, it was more difficult for drivers to cohere to the signal indication.
Then how come Farr and Pierce said that, that it didn't have an effect? Because you're making it sound like it does have an effect.
I'm sorry, I think I don't understand.
Well, what you just were talking about, Farr and Pierce drew the conclusion, at least in this report, that there's really, you know, no, no impact of the billboards on, on, on traffic safety. But you're saying that there was an impact if a billboard was behind a traffic light?
A billboard, according to the study, depending on how it's placed relative to traffic signals or traffic signs can be distracting, but during our site evaluation that we did of the Sunset Strip, no billboards are placed directly behind traffic signals in a way that would distract drivers.
Okay, but that doesn't mean that it might not happen in the future, so.
Can I ask a follow-up? It sounds like that is something that our staff looks at when somebody applies for a billboard. They evaluate that specific site for traffic safety. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we look at it from many different angles, from eastbound, westbound, north, south. So we do look at that when we're reviewing the applications.
So, so, thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor. But again, so I asked if there were any studies looking at the position of the billboard versus the road, and there weren't. The concern, the reason I'm asking the question is because we're saying that we're going to change the angle of the billboards to face Sunset, which, you know, will be good for resident, residential, but then may not, may have a different impact on traffic safety.
We did not see any studies that indicated whether there is a relationship between the angle of the billboard contributing to driver destruction.
Okay, and we didn't do any studies on our own either?
I know.
Okay, thank you.
And I would also just say that the, while this is codifying those relationships of the billboards to the property lines in the policy, we have been evaluating it for that kind of thing going on through the negotiation of the DA, through the evaluation of the project. These are largely things that have been applied to the projects that have gone forward so far. We're just making sure that it is codified into the policy so that we know that it can be applied in the future as well. So it's not really a change to the, to the orientation of the billboards proactively. It's, it's really just kind of memorializing what's been going on already.
Okay. And then I have a question regarding, there was a letter from Fred Gaines of Gaines &amp; Stacy LLP, representing Sierra Towers. And he talks about a potential conflict of interest regarding FKA, the consultant that prepared the lighting study, also is preparing the lighting study for 9160 Sunset Project. And I just wondered, is DUDAC also working with 9160? And is Farr and Pierce working with 9160?
Farr and Pierce and DUDAC, and in fact, FKA are not working directly with the applicant on that project as they move through the process at this time. In the past, they may have been associated at FKA, but at this point in time, they are only contracted with the city.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you. I recognize I didn't close the public testimony, and since we don't have any additional public speakers, I will go ahead and do that now. Are there other comments or questions from council, Vice Mayor?
Well, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know that I have a question. I, I guess I want to just, big picture clarification from staff. It seems like what is before us today is, or tonight, is to actually make the lighting standards stricter and to require that the billboards be oriented away from Sunset. So it seems like this is trying to address some of the concerns and complaints that we have heard from people who are nearby some of the billboards. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And in terms of the, the safety, I know Wendy asked the question, if you're orienting it away from residents, are you then going to be orient, orienting it towards residents on the other side of the street? But the way I read this policy is that the billboard needs to be oriented towards Sunset and not towards residents on either side of the street. Is that correct?
That is correct, to the extent possible, yes.
Sorry, Dan.
That's okay, that's okay.
All right. I'm, I'm comfortable with the recommendations. I think they do improve the lighting and make it better for residents. I, I do share some of Councilmember Meister's concerns about the full motion, particularly as it relates to our own art program on Sunset. But this seems to be an improvement from what we have currently, so I'm supportive of it.
I'm going to go back to Councilmember Meister, I think you had a point for clarity.
Yeah, because I just wanted to follow up, because I, I agree with, with Vice Mayor Heilman that these are improvements to the, to the amendment, but, but my concern is we are also voting on the SEQA analysis, which will apply to the new billboards, the 1.5s and the 2.0, which, which, there are comments from some of the public that feel that there should be a full SEQA analysis as opposed to just an update for that 2.0 and 1.5. So I guess my, what I would appreciate is if we separate out the SEQA analysis part of this approval from the other recommendations about the changes.
Okay, that's fine. We can take two votes tonight, that's no problem. Are there other comments or questions? Councilmember Hang?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I believe these amendments give the city the clarity, safeguards, and authority needed to confidently advance the next phases of the program. And my only ask is, if these amendments do pass, that staff starts taking projects to the Sunset Arts and Advertising Subcommittee of the Planning Commission as soon as they're ready. I know there's been some discussion of taking all the round 1.5 projects before starting on round two projects, but I'd like to request that staff takes these projects as soon as they're ready so that they can advance through the process so that we can see more of them before us here at the council. Thank you.
Terrific. Councilmember Meister, sell your name back on the queue, did you want to?
Yeah, I mean, if there's anybody else wants to speak.
I think he's good, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, and, and one of the reasons I brought up about the environmental studies is because, for example, to me, there was a, a sense that, that, again, that the billboards will not affect traffic safety based on the studies that were presented. However, very specifically, Wang, Wang et al. says, in, in other words, "The specific characteristics in the context of other factors can influence distraction levels to varying extents depending on the combination of these characteristics." Research suggests placing full motion billboards next to vital traffic signs can affect drivers' ability to recognize those signs and potentially alter their driving behavior. So they're not saying they don't have an effect, they're saying it's hard to discern which, which factor is, is contributing most. The other issue is the analysis of the lighting effects on wildlife. We may be in a highly urbanized area, but north of the strip is not. And. And as one commenter said, and I was thinking the same, that I would have loved to have seen a second report from an organization that doesn't cater to development, maybe an organization like the Nature Conservancy or some nature, some organization that actually has concerns about, you know, about, about what effect it might be having on wildlife. I have, I've said it before, I think FKA's assertion that we are in LZ4 when the default for urban areas is LZ3, I, I take issue with their assertion. And although the billboards on the strip may emit higher lighting similar to other LZ4 zones, it's just a strip, it's a corridor, not a whole area, and the area north of the strip includes wildlands. And south of the strip obviously is primarily residential and shouldn't have to endure the impacts of an LZ4 zoning. There is also, and I just wanted to mention that one of the commenters on page 1437, and I mentioned this to you already, Jennifer, that it was just their, their comments, it was actually the amendment and it was a PDF and they had obviously made comments, they had little yellow stickies and whatever, but there was no identification that, of who this was, or at least that it was a public comment. So I start reading it thinking that it's actually a, a red line of, of the, of the amendment, and, and it wasn't. It was actually a lawyer representative who, you know, has business interests in the city. So, you know, that, that should be corrected for the record. And one other question I have is, do we think about, when applicants are actually submitting their project, are they told that they should not be blocking other billboards? Because we seem to have a problem when, when, like, for example, the Comedy Store went blocking, you know, and then they had to change the position, or, you know, why don't we have, since we're making these amendments, why don't we have a requirement that says, do not turn in a project that is blocking another billboard? So that we, the burden is not on us, so that the burden is on the applicant. And if they can't manage to do that, then they shouldn't be doing the project and wasting staff's time. So I, I'm just wondering, is there any appetite to add something? I don't, I know Vice Mayor Heilman is very good at, at wording things like this, but something to that effect? Because there's nothing in here that really, you know, we've always said the burden, that, that, you know, we, we can't protect views, but somehow we're, we're, you know, like chickens with our heads cut off when it does end up blocking another, another billboard.
I'll let Vice Mayor Heilman jump in. Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer Davis. Jennifer, you first.
To that, to that point, a couple of things. We never know when the application will come in vis-à-vis other applications, when they will be deemed complete, if the project is even a go-ahead. So we, we accept the applications as we are required to do, and then we work with the applicants long and hard. We do animated videos to determine where exactly any other billboard will be obstructed. And oftentimes, these billboards are moved north, south, back, across, changed shape, changed height. So all of this, it may not appear as happening, but it is happening with almost every application. And also, in my Planning Commission staff reports, I always add a section about obstruction, whether or not it is obstructing another proposed or existing billboard. We try to even include proposed ones so that we can anticipate where obstruction may occur in the future. So we do spend a lot of time, there are a couple of applications right now going through this sort of dialogue with their neighbors to understand what is the best approach, probably three of them active right now, trying to decide where should the, the boards be placed in order to not obstruct each other, basically. So we do spend a lot of time and effort on that in the review of the applications.
Thank you for that description. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Well, I, I just, I think that topic wasn't really part of these amendments, but I'm wondering if there is an official policy. It sounds like Jennifer works closely with the applicants to avoid blocking other billboards, but there have been a couple of situations where that has occurred. I'm wondering if we can ask our staff to look at whether it's appropriate for us to adopt an official policy. I know it has been council's direction in the past to avoid blocking other signs, but I don't know if it's actually in any of our policy language.
I'll, I'll jump in first, and I'll let Jennifer. So we work a lot with the applicants, as Jennifer Davis just talked about. But I think the reality, kind of, blocking is in the perspective of the person being blocked. And it's almost impossible to not block some portion of another billboard. So we work very closely with all of the applicants and awardees to try to make sure that at least blocks it the least and that they work with their neighbors before they finalize things and bring them to us. So we're not the one doing, telling them where to put it. And I think it's worked in many cases, and in some, as we've seen, it hasn't worked as, out as well. But I think having a policy that doesn't allow blocking at all would just, if we would not have a program, it'd be impossible on the way, with the way Sunset is right now.
Well, maybe the policy is that signage needs to be located in a way that minimizes, doesn't prevent any kind of blockage, but minimizes blocking other existing signs. But it seems like that's the practice, but I don't know whether we need to codify it or whether there's some kind of language that creates flexibility but also expresses that intention.
To me, it, it feels like it's been a part of the expressed intention of the program itself. We want this program to work, which is, there's a shared desire for these to not be overlapping. The idea that it could happen to one means it could happen to anybody else's as well. And so I think there's sort of a shared practice, and I appreciate the work staff's done in the very specific situations to negotiate and figure out the best path forward. But I think a policy would be restrictive on a program that's aimed to be creative.
May I?
Councilmember Erickson?
Isn't there already language in the policy since 2019 that discourages blocking?
Yes.
Great. So answered, question answered, there we go. I don't think we want to get into, you know, the, the way of objective versus subjective. I think as we saw with the Comedy Store example, the Comedy Store was giving, what, a million dollars to the city, and the Ondas' minor objection, which got resolved. The Ondas was not giving anything to the city as a result. And so, you know, I think when it comes to that, we try our best, and I've seen both as a planning commissioner, as a council member, that be the intent. I worry about undue consequences, and frankly, I think inserting that type of language is almost a poison pill. That would essentially make the program defunct and not work. And so I, I don't support codifying that into a policy. I think it's already done in practice, and I've seen it and experienced it. And very rarely, if it does get to that case, I think the applicants have it in their financial best interests to, to work it out, and I think they have. So I, I'm supportive of this item. I have a quick question. Why are we separating out the SEQA again?
Councilmember Meister wanted to be able to vote separately, but it seems we may not actually be able to do that by the way the resolution's written, so that may have been my bad.
Because the, because the SEQA analysis has to do with future billboards, and the SEQA analysis is just an update on, in certain areas, not a full SEQA analysis, which is what I would want.
But your, but your understanding, Madam Mayor, is that we can't do that?
Yeah, I think I may have misspoke. I thought it was two separate recommendations, but it's one resolution that's doing both. So we may have to defer to our city attorney for how to sort this out.
Is there a way for us to allow Councilmember Meister to vote no on the SEQA update and then vote on the overall resolution after that?
I would just say, like, you know, you get to vote no, so vote no, and that's kind of where it's at.
Well, I don't understand why the resolution can't be separated.
Can I get an answer from the city attorney?
So the mayor's right that everything is presented in one resolution. It's got the SEQA update and then the changes to the specific plan. We could separate it into two resolutions if, if need be, but that would take a little work, it looks like.
The, the SEQA is also for the, for the amendment itself. So the addendum to the negative declaration is to cover the changes in the, in the policy as well as the study that went for the signs in 1.5 and 2. So it would be difficult to separate, we'd have to really do more work to separate out which part of it was for the amendments and which part of it was for the future signs.
Could we just vote conceptually in favor of the SEQA portion of this and allow Councilmember Meister to vote no on that, and then separately move the resolution that includes everything?
Right, she can note her objection to part of it for the record, but the document is the one resolution.
Then I'll go ahead and move the, the recommendation of staff.
With the amended language portion? Or what?
Yes, it's the.
Changes read into the record?
Yes, the changes that were read. Thank you.
Terrific. And the public hearing is closed, as I stated. Thank you for the vote, for the motion and the second.
Do I have to say something?
If you'd like to, yeah, this is the moment, I believe.
That, that I am in favor of the amendments, but I am not in favor of approving the SEQA analysis.
So you're, for the record, you're explaining to the public?
Yes.
That you don't support.
Right, that I'm in favor of supporting the amendments, but I feel that there should be a full SEQA analysis for 1.5 and 2.0 of the billboard program.
But it will show a 5-0 vote on the resolution, I just want to be clear. That will be in the minutes, just to be clear.
Yeah, everyone said I have to vote yes if I'm for the amendments.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm making it clear that I'm not for the SEQA analysis for 1.5, 2.0.
And then I'd like to just remind staff of my one ask. Thank you.
We'll move to unfinished business, item E1, the request to, and thank you to staff for the presentation, request to install a plaque in remembrance of those disappeared by ICE under the Trump administration. Councilmember Meister, you brought this forward, we'll turn it to you to present.
I think there's a question or objection or something.
I have some questions.
Councilmember Erickson, okay.
Find it.
Hold on.
Do we have public comment?
There's nobody signed up to speak in public comment? So Councilmember Meister is looking for the item, and if you'd like to jump in and ask questions, Councilmember Erickson, you're welcome.
Sure, I'll just wait for my colleague to pull it up. I saw you took off your sunglasses, so I don't want you to have to stare if you need to put that on. Did you, did you talk to any community groups or organizations that have been dealing with individuals impacted by ICE raids before introducing this item?
No.
Have you talked to any families or individuals impacted by ICE raids regarding this item?
Not regarding this item.
Not regarding this items, so.
The idea came from, there is a plaque on Westbourne, on a piece of stone, very simple, recognizing something similar, and because of what, what we've seen happening across the nation, thought that West Hollywood would want to, to memorialize this and pay respect to, to people who were disappeared.
Yeah, no, I fully support that. I just always want to make sure community's driving this, and right now, what I know community needs is funding for legal services, food, rent assistance, and, and many other things, and that is my day job, because I deal with that on a daily basis. And so I, I personally, if, you know, the council wants to move forward with this, that's fine, but I think that this money can be better directed, or a larger purpose and vision can be given to help impact, families impacted in West Hollywood by ICE.
Well, this would be, this would follow the city's memorial policy guidelines, so it would go to the public before any money is spent on it. Isn't that, I mean, that's, that's the whole point, is that it goes through a public process. I'm not, I'm not asking for it to just be approved and give $1,500 or up to $5,000. What I'm asking for is for it to go through the process.
Yeah, I just think that what the public who's being impacted by this needs is, if they're not going, are, are we going out and asking West Hollywood members impacted by ICE to go to the Public Facilities Commission meeting? I mean, that's who needs to be giving input into this item. That's, that's my, like, can we tell, Chirla should come out and say, hey, you know what we, you know, it's the different orgs that actually are, are dealing with that. So I, I think that the intention is admirable, and I love it, and so I just want to make sure that the community's weighing in on this, just like, I know my colleague Vice Mayor Heilman talked about the suicide memorial that we'll talk about later, that had a lot of input from a lot of groups. So as long as we're going to make sure that groups that are involved in this are coming out, I think it'd be even better, because we can make it really grand.
Yeah, and I'm not putting a rush on this, it's, it's, it doesn't have to be done tomorrow. It's, it's the thought that we, we want to remember these people.
Vice Mayor Heilman, I saw you signed up to speak.
Yeah.
Please keep the applause in the crowd to minimum, appreciate it.
I appreciate the intention of this. I do share Councilmember Erickson's concern about, is this really the priority for those who are most impacted by the ICE raids? Perhaps as this moves forward, we can, we can ask that question, and we can ask our, our staff to also identify, is this the, the priority for the impacted community, or are there other priorities? We certainly, you know, a one-time plaque, we do it and have done it. Maybe it makes more sense to have an annual program or an annual event that recognizes and provides funding, as opposed to a one-time plaque that may get ignored or forgotten in the future. But I, I certainly am okay moving this forward, but maybe in line with what Councilmember Erickson is saying, maybe the discussion needs to be broadened a bit.
Thank you. I, Councilmember Heng, I just saw you jump in. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the intent of the item, so if there's the will to move forward, I'm in agreement with it. And just to note, you know, when one of our community members was taken at the car wash, Councilmember Meister and I both talked to their family members. So it was that weekend where she was involved in consoling the family members and helping to make sure that they're okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Heilman, I'll turn it back to you.
Oh, I'm done, but that, maybe that's the appropriate location for some kind of plaque to recognize the horrific thing that happened that weekend.
I just want to know, you know, we're 11 months into an administration who is only continuing funding this program. I think we're really early in a process around recognizing, I think the plaque you were referring to, Councilmember Meister, is about the people disappeared in Chile under dictator Pinochet's rule. And even now, the number in total, it would be inappropriate to put, as there is no clear number on what's actually happening in that context either. So I appreciate that this will go through a process and engage community in a bigger and broader way to see what is appropriate, because of course, our city will continue to recognize those disappeared and support the families and communities impacted. And if this will be one of those ways, then that will be one of those ways we do it. But I thank you for bringing this forward. I think we have a motion, if you'd like to move your item forward, councilmember? If that screen will work? Here it is.
And also, you know, here's the thing, it's part of also remembering what this administration is doing to our country. That's also part of this.
That's right. Thank you.
I'm just making sure that the proposed recommendations are part of your motion? Okay.
Okay. We're going to move to item E2, the reconceptualization and restoration of a music festival on the Sunset Strip. This was an item that we began to discuss at the last council meeting. I do see there's one speaker signed up to comment, and then we'll hand it back over to Vice Mayor Heilman to reintroduce the item. We have Cody Christensen in the public to speak. Hi.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Cody Christensen. I'm a member of the West Hollywood Business Task Force, a longtime resident and small business representative for Cake &amp; Art, which is celebrating 50 years next year. I'm here to, with strong support for Councilmember Heilman and Heng's. I'm here with strong support for Councilmember Heilman and Hang's proposal to bring back the Sunset Strip Music Festival. When I first moved to West Hollywood, the Strip felt electric. You could walk down Sunset and feel the pulse of what made this city famous, music, creativity, and the sense that anything could happen here. Reviving the festival isn't just about nostalgia, it's about restoring that rhythm to our city's heart. It would bring visitors back to our legendary venues, fill our hotels and restaurants, and remind the world that West Hollywood is still the stage where dreams take the mic. We've poured so much beautiful energy into the Rainbow District, and I love that, but we can't forget the Sunset Strip, the place where music history was born, where the walls still hum with stories from the Roxy to the Whiskey to the Rainbow. Reigniting that stretch means investing in our small businesses, our artists, and the very identity that put West Hollywood on the map. And like Vice Mayor Heilman said at the last meeting, this can't wait. There are so many people in our community, all over the state, all over the world, really, with the passion and purpose to make this happen in record time. Who wouldn't want to be on the forefront of this rock and roll rebirth, right? And while we're bringing the Strip back to life, I'd like to partner with any or all of the council in creating an additional proposal to revive the Sunset Strip Evening Farmers Market in its original form with real farmers, handmade food and goods, live music, food trucks, and a small beer garden that complements rather than defines the event. That market created community, gave locals and tourists a light place to meet, to linger, to listen, and to be together under the glow of the Strip's lights. If we can bring both back, the festival and the market, we're not just celebrating the past, we're cultivating the next generation of creativity and connection in our distinctly diverse community. We must focus just as much energy on the Strip as we do other parts of our beautiful city. From rainbows to rock and roll, we are one city, one WeHo, and together we thrive.
Thank you. I know we have a commenter in Zoom as well. We'll go there, and then we have a citizen position slip.
We have Genevieve Morrow. Genevieve, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mayor Byers, Vice Mayor Heilman, and Councilmembers. Genevieve Morrow, President and CEO of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, and also serves as Executive Director for the Sunset Strip Improvement District, Business Improvement District. And we're here to voice our strong support for this proposal. Thank you so much, Councilmembers, for bringing this forward, and begin negotiation with qualified music festival promoters and reimagine and restore some sort of music type of event on the Sunset Strip. Sunset Strip Music Festival wasn't just an event, it was a celebration of our city's soul, our history, our creative heartbeat. It drew thousands of visitors, generated media attention around the world, and brought life and energy to our local businesses. Everyone knew SSMF. So while the original model wasn't financially sustainable, the brand reached international recognition, and the spirit of the festival still resonates today. When we did Spinning Sunset last August, there were 4,000 people attend, and a lot of them came up and just were very emotional about the energy that that brought back to the Strip, and people are thriving, craving, craving to have this back. We're thrilled the proposal emphasized collaboration between experienced music producers and iconic venues. I just want to shout out for Halloween, thank you for Halloween, City of West Hollywood. But I also want to shout out that Authentic Agency, Liam Lynch, has hosted Halloween for over 12 years, and I rarely hear his name at the council meetings. So congratulations, Authentic Agency, for partnering with the city. The city hired them to do Halloween in the last 12 years. Leveraging the city's arts and advertising programs helps, we could do something creative with that, and really recognizing the international brand with reimagining the festival that can reignite that magic and drive our economic vitality. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And then we have a citizen position slip. Yes, Victor Omolchenko provided us with a citizen position slip in support of this item. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll hand it back over to Vice Mayor Heilman.
Thank you. And I know we had a bit of a discussion last meeting, and Councilmember Meister unfortunately had to leave the meeting. I did want to address a couple of issues. This item is not just the restoration of the music festival. It recommends that in addition to the festival, there be a series of activities that enliven Sunset Strip. I know, Mayor, you referenced a possible New Year's Eve event, and I'm certainly open to including that in the series of events that would be part of the reconceptualization and restoration of the music festival. One of the other events that was very successful and got a lot of attention is that an event where we honored an icon of the rock and roll industry, somebody who had a deep connection to the Sunset Strip. And I certainly think that that would be an important event to include. We did get a comment from Elise Eisenberg from the neighborhood in support of the event, but she mentioned something very important, and that is that we need to have community involvement in addition to business, community involvement. So I am prepared to answer any questions. I don't know if my colleague, Councilmember Hang, has additional comments that he wants to add.
Councilmember Hang?
No, I said what I said at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Remind me again, Vice Mayor Heilman, the Sunset Strip bid will proceed with getting the producer, et cetera, et cetera, to do the festival, or is that a city responsibility?
It would be a city responsibility.
So David, what does that timeline look like? I know we have to do an RFP, there's a process. When would the earliest be that we would even approve that person?
So we wouldn't have to do a RFP. I think what the item recommends or proposes is that the city manager or my designee negotiate with qualified event producers. This would be different than Pride or Halloween in that we are not paying them to produce the event. They would sell tickets, and so they would run the music festival the way any other music festivals run on its own. The city would provide the infrastructure, whatever help is needed with stages or closing the streets or those type of things. But it would really be bringing in a music festival producer to produce the event, which will still take time. I think we'd have to find that out through those discussions and negotiations with potential producers.
How long do those things take, though?
Typically, months, at least the negotiation portion of it. So I would say that would be at least the next two, two to three months at the most to negotiate something with potential.
And then the council has to ratify it?
Yes.
So ideally, the first meeting in January?
Ideally, yes.
At the earliest?
Yeah, or late December, late December, early January, coming back at least with some potential, if not just one producer. But it just depends on what's out there. It does say that they have some experience with the Sunset Strip, so we would be looking for people who have experience as well as have some type of relationship with the clubs and venues on Sunset.
Okay.
I think realistically, there's only a handful of entities that would have the relevant experience and the qualifications. I know that they, that several have already been speaking to some of the businesses, and also I believe they've had some conversation with you, David, correct? Okay.
Councilmember Erickson?
Do you want comments or questions?
Yeah, comments, questions.
So I just want to make it crystal clear that no music festival is going to save the Sunset Strip. It's not going to save any businesses from going out of business. It's not, it's just not going to happen. I know in the next item, I'm about, people are going to start saying, whoa, no, process, process, process. But now here, we are saying, speed it up, speed it up, speed it up. And asking staff to put on a music festival by... When did Sunset Strip Music Festival normally happen? August? August of next year? I just, I'm going to support this, I'm going to vote for this, but I have grave, grave concerns, and I don't want them to come true. And I think that for every time we say, process, 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 and then we don't speed up things and work on our bureaucratic, frankly, bloat that slows everything down, we all know David's not coming back to us with a contract for a producer until February. I mean, I know you, well, you won't be here, but you know, but that's fine, we'll miss you. Whoever sits in your seat will not be doing that, right? And I just want everyone to be aware that it is the height of hypocrisy for us to ask to move something fast and then move something out of the way and sacrifice staff who are already overworked, because this means in the middle of Pride at the same time. And you already start Halloween already. You're doing, I know because I've worked there, right? So I just wanted to be crystal clear that you can say one thing to prevent roadblocks on one side, but to do it on the other side is not fair. And so I'm going to support this item because I believe in the intent, and I believe in the nature of where my colleagues are coming from, and I want to see this succeed. But I have grave, grave concerns that we are giving a music producer, and this happened the first year of WeHo Pride, when at the last second, we had to say, oh, by the way, Jeff, can you do a parade? And he did it really well, but it was really, really hard. And it was, it cost, how much did the extra, the cost of the parade cost? It was like a million dollars? I mean, I'm looking at Clio, like, you don't need to come up because you already forced you to come up the last time. So I just want us to be very well aware that every community meeting these groups are going to have to go to, every board and commission they're going to have to go to, every Tom, Dick, and Harry they're going to have to talk to is literally a week, a month, two months in the process. So if you want to speed this up, happy to do it, but then we need to give higher authority to our city manager to approve things, so that way the process doesn't have to come the first and third Monday of every council meeting. And that is my concern, because we are not a full-time council, and the businesses expect, and I think they deserve more. And I've spoken to a number of the people, and I told them I'm going to support it, so I am going to do it. But I just want to be on the record that for as much flack as I'm going to get in the next item, that we can't be saying to do that here and not expect the same results. So I just want to be clear, and that's it.
Councilmember Hang?
Thank you, Mayor. I, while I understand my colleague's point, thank you very much for sharing. I do believe that this music festival will be a vehicle to help reinvigorate Sunset. And it might not save every business, but it'll bring business to some of the businesses on Sunset that might need a little bit of help. And this will help put West Hollywood on the map, and that's just kind of where I'm at. And the fact that the city of West Hollywood was able to put Pride together in a matter of months a couple of years ago, I think we can do it. Thank you.
Councilmember Meister, do you have any questions? We waited to move this item until you were back.
Yeah, I'm just going to say that we've had at least, you know, three to five items on how to get to invigorate Sunset and have done nothing, and this is doing something. So I'm supportive of the item.
To the point of process, one of the items, I think it was an item you brought forward, was a strategic plan for how to look at Sunset. Tonight, we also approved a number of amendments to the Sunset Billboard Project, and as you named, we have 1.5, 2.0. There's a lot of long-term work to reinvigorate and restore Sunset Strip. I expressed my concerns thoroughly at the last meeting around the rush, the pressure on staff capacity that this will absolutely bring, and the trade-off in priorities, which I feel like we're constantly making as of recent around what our commitments to long-term work are and what becomes something urgent and immediate that we will over-prioritize to staff. I agree, it feels silly to not support something as glamorous and fabulous as the eventual Sunset Strip Music Festival will become, but to do it in 2026 is just another challenge that the city council is giving to our staff and therefore to the rest of the priorities we have as a city. And I think that's something that will continue to weigh on us until we decide how else we want to handle it. This is something that is, of course, exciting, and I appreciate the thinking around a multitude of different work, as we've seen Spinning Sunset be a multi-pronged event happening under the bid structure. So I think the intent of this is really exciting and hopeful, but I am really challenged by how we continue as a council to reprioritize staff's work plan in favor of things that feel very urgent. So I just wanted to express that, I appreciate that. And this item has a motion and a second.
Thank you.
We'll move to item three, E3, removing infrastructure roadblocks. Councilmember Erickson, would you like to do a presentation of this to begin? We have a number of people signed up in public comments. Do you want to introduce the item?
Sure. So this is an item that we continued from our last meeting regarding a lot of the roadblocks I've seen come up, ones that I previewed in the last one, ones that continue to occur. I think it's important that we make sure that any investment of public dollars, especially when we're talking hundreds, if not hundreds of thousands and millions, has a lot of roadblocks and safeguards in place. For example, this council at any time could stop a lot of issues. For example, the $18 million Sky Sanctuaries program that is in the programming phase is, could be stopped at any moment, but the city's investing significant time and resources into their. Weaver's Walk continued to be a weight that the city had to carry for many reasons, of which that could have changed at any other reason, and continuing to look at how we invest in infrastructure and redevelopment. This in no way, shape, and form is about removing community process. This is exactly about making sure that there are guidelines to direct staff to standardize protocols for these projects. That's literally what we hear about, saying, well, you didn't send a mailer for this, but you did for this. Well, this gives direction to create a framework to do so. I don't see that as removing a process, I see that as creating one, and one that when you go, when you look up something, you can see on Engage WeHo what is actually happening, how is it happening and moving forward. And it's also planning to make sure that no matter what we do, we can ensure that the dollars that we spend are being spent effectively. And I know for a fact that when this council is equally divided on items, where the majority or the minority is pushing hard, staff has, and it did come up this last time, slowed things down. There was an accusation at one point that Farr and Pierce stopped some construction documents because they were worried about certain things. That proved to be false, understandably. That was a rumor in the community, though. But it is continuing to bother me that staff is guiding themselves on their policy priorities for serious projects that they're investing time and money in because they are worried about an election outcome, or exactly what we shouldn't be worried about is politics in this public process. And so by investing and ensuring that in order to remove, I mean, let's be very honest, Holloway, an $11 million project, just completed. If the 2022 election had gone the other way, we would have had a 3-2 against it, and we're all over there celebrating it. There were people actively campaigning against opening that project. That's embarrassing. Nevertheless, they didn't win because in this community, we provide care, but that's the type of stuff we should avoid. And staff should be working diligently, and they do. I love staff, I think they do a great job, but not having to worry about those things, as well as our contractors that we pay a lot of money to invest in these processes. So if you think this is about removing public process, of which I made a list, and I see all my dear friends up here are going to come up and say it, then that's on you, that's not on me. Nowhere does it say that, and if that is your assumption, I'm saying it right here and now, that this is about creating standardized protocols to engage in this. So those are my comments, and thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment, and then we'll come back to council comments and questions and deliberation. First, I have Victor Omolchenko, followed by Ed Holman, and then Kyle Rezil. Victor's first, though, Ed. Okay, just making, thanks for getting ready. Yeah, thanks. I appreciate you following my line queuing.
Hello again, Victor Omolchenko. Well, I am somewhat concerned about this item, but I'm specifically very concerned about the proposal to require a four-to-one vote to reverse previously approved infrastructure projects. This change does feel undemocratic to me, and my nearly quarter century of living here, I've only seen a four-to-one vote used for emergency ordinances and never as a blanket rule to shield decisions from future reconsideration. I feel it sets a dangerous precedent that undermines the principle of majority rule, and it limits the ability of future councils to respond to evolving community needs. Now, the staff report cites as infrastructure examples the redesigns of historic Hart Park and Fountain Avenue, and those are two efforts that I have been personally involved in and supported. The former is a Public Facilities Commissioner and historic preservationist regarding Hart Park, and the latter as an active bicyclist and pedestrian. I believe. I believe protected bike lanes, wider sidewalks and traffic calming measures are long overdue. Fountain has become a high-speed cut through, the Fountain Freeway, and it's time greater safety and livability measures are implemented. But supporting this project or others doesn't mean supporting procedural roadblocks that silence dissent or public input. I'm very wary of recent decisions and efforts to streamline processes so much that it appears robust public input is being diminished. Now, this proposal seems aimed at insulating the city council from public pressure. That's not how democracy works. We elect you council members to represent us, not to entrench decisions beyond reach. If a future council elected by our community wants to revisit a project, they should be able to do so with a simple majority. Earlier, I spoke about the importance of voting in a democracy, and in this case, please don't dilute democracy in the name of progress. Thank you.
Ed Holman, followed by Kyle Brazile, followed by Nick Renteria.
Good evening once again. He got three, why did I only get two?
That was our mistake. It automatically does three because council is the only body.
Can we restart mine?
Ed, go ahead. We'll give you a little leeway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any amendment or item that changes the rule to require a four-vote supermajority to reverse an item from a prior council should require a four-vote supermajority to be implemented. Part of E3 reads "streamlining of commission and council approval processes to eliminate barriers and expedite product completion." Sentence four reads "direct staff to draft an amendment to the city's municipal code to require a four-fifth vote to reverse the approval of infrastructure and capital improvement projects." Forty years of cityhood and we've never needed an amendment to change how many votes it requires to do anything. Majority rules, five council members, three votes, and the affirmative to move a project forward. This should stay the same in reverse. Why are we changing this in year 41? Streamlining? Streamlining my ass. We literally have one item on this ballot year and it's to stop a power grab by the right in the House of Representatives. And now here in West Hollywood, we have a power grab being voted on, not by the constituents, but by the council body itself to give one side an unfair advantage. A powerful union, a powerful union currently has a grip on majority of the seats on this council, and now they are calling in one of their chips to get the same people to make their next move, to make it require a four-vote supermajority to overturn anything and everything they've done to our city. Making it harder for councils for tomorrow to clean up the shit projects that have been passed by this and other councils have been approved today and in the past isn't about streamlining. The pet project passed by former, current and future councils should be made to stand up to the same voting standards of today and of yesterday. Majority rules. Councils in the past have never required supermajorities, councils in the present shouldn't require supermajorities, and councils of the future shouldn't require them either. Thank you.
Thank you. Kyle Brazile, followed by Nick Renteria, followed by Kimberly Winnick.
Like everyone else, I value efforts to improve government efficiency, but it should be no surprise that we're here instead watching councilmember Erickson employ the populist playbook again, taking a shared frustration around slow and ineffective government and twisting it into a proposal to silence the very constituents he was elected to represent. The idea of requiring a four-fifth supermajority to reverse infrastructure decisions isn't about enhancing efficiency or governance, it's about insulating bad, unpopular decisions. It is a testament to this council's insecurity about the expected backlash against this council's war on mobility and parking, the same backlash we've seen play out in Culver City and elsewhere. Groups like Streets For All and Erickson like to label councils and communities that course correct and remove these unpopular projects as MAGA, but that's clearly not what this is. We're seeing communities respond to failed promises, projects that fail to improve safety or induce a shift out of cars and onto bikes. What we do see instead is continued deaths and injuries, lost parking and increased congestion. Residents in these communities are tired of seeing the livability of their communities eroded to appease a small, well-connected group of advocates with a disproportionate say in how public resources are used due to their campaign efforts and contributions. We saw their logic on display tonight. As at the Halloween carnival, they referenced street closures created undesirable traffic congestion and their answer was remove parking and restrict more lanes. Fortunately, this supermajority requirement is just an empty gesture, like many other Erickson charades. State law allows a simple majority to reverse this requirement, effectively making this a moot performative effort. But let's not miss the message behind Erickson's recommendation here. When leaders can't win support through consensus, they'll change the rules to avoid accountability. That's not democracy. If a project is truly good for West Hollywood, it will earn broad support on its merits. But when a project divides us like the Fountain redesign project, that's a signal to pause, listen and find compromise, not a sign to double down. So let's reject the supermajority requirement in principle and reaffirm that dialogue, accountability and compromise are not roadblocks, they're the foundation of good municipal governments.
Thank you. Nick Renteria, followed by Kimberly Winnick, followed by Andrew Solomon.
Hi, I'm here to speak in support of this item. I think it's very important. As someone who was hit by a car, I know firsthand how our streets are very unsafe. And quite frankly, I've been very frustrated in the amount of community input that the Fountain Avenue redesign project has. If there's anything I've learned from this current presidential administration, it's that we don't need people who are uneducated on certain topics having real decision-making power over them. I think we should trust the staff that we pay to research these topics. We should trust the people who have done the work to educate themselves, done the work to research our community, done the work to reach out to us, and we should implement their plans as quickly as possible. I understand that community input is very important and I think that we do need to respect that, but I think it has reached a point where we need to acknowledge that it is slowing down our ability to create meaningful change and that could save lives. And I don't think we can risk that. I think we have a lot of seniors in our community, we have a lot of people who want to bike who can't, we have people with mobility issues who are disproportionately at risk with unsafe streets, and we need to act to protect those people. Thank you.
Kimberly Winnick, followed by Andrew Solomon, followed by Anita Goswami.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. I'm Kimberly Winnick, a longtime resident of the city, a former commissioner on the Transportation and Mobility Commission, a cyclist and a senior citizen. And this really shouldn't just be talking about Fountain. What we're talking about is the fact that sometimes decisions are made and then there's more information, and so perhaps reconsideration is appropriate. Or sometimes people have supported something and then they learn more and say, maybe I shouldn't have supported it. I agree that we need to try to use our resources sensibly, that we need to try to, in the first instance, gather all the information needed so that a wise decision and a correct decision can be made. I also believe that we're making decisions with a majority and we should be perhaps unmaking them with a majority. If people learn that they made a mistake, they should be able to fix it. And that's true for our, for our council as well as for individuals. I don't think that that should be hamstrung. I think that the correct way to do this is to listen to advisory committees, to listen to commissions, to listen to each other and to the community and solicit as much information as possible before you make a decision, but then recognize that if you've made a majority decision and there's a lot of pushback, perhaps you didn't gather all the information that might have been available in the first instance, and it's time to stop and reconsider. And so I am very much against this proposal, much as I appreciate the thought that goes into it. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Andrew Solomon next, and then I saw Michael Seldich get added to the list, and Anita Goswami is after that.
Hi, good evening, councilmembers. I'm not here to holler about bike lanes, I'm just here to talk about process. Take Weaver's Walk started in 2014, finished in 2025, it's 11 years. Take Fountain Avenue, it was first brought up and passed in March 2021, the estimated completion date is mid-2027. You all have already voted on it five times, I think you have another vote on it again. It's six years, six votes. I don't, I know we're all divided on this, but I don't care if you're pro-bike lanes or you want to widen the street and create more vehicle lanes and more cars. Nothing should take this long in a city of 1.9 square miles. We're a small, financially healthy city. Being nimble and being quick to respond to people and to events, that should be the superpower of West Hollywood, but instead it's a crutch. I hope this item also includes, or a future item, reforming our contracting thresholds. Title II of the municipal code limits staff authority to $75,000, which is nothing when it comes to infrastructure. It's also been at $75,000 for decades, it's a non-inflationary adjusted number. I would love, I would love to amend our thresholds in such a way that our staff are empowered to be able to do their jobs. They are the real subject matter experts. No one in town knows more about a sewer than Helen Collins. Give her the authority and the approval to do her job quickly and do it quickly, rather than having to come to you every first and third Monday. We're small, we're smart, there's no reason why we can't also be the fastest city in West Hollywood to get things done. Thanks.
Thank you. Michael Seldich, followed by Anita Goswami, followed by Kathy Blavis.
Let's be clear, the premise of item E3 introduced by Mr. Erickson is simple. It attempts to shut down public process on all city projects. It aims to silence community engagement on public projects, projects that affect our daily lives and spend our tax dollars. E3 is wrapped in irrelevant populist slogans like "safe streets first," but E3 has nothing to do with safety and everything to do with control disguised as efficiency. Erickson's real agenda is hidden in the dangerous proposal requiring a four-to-one supermajority to reverse any project approval, underscoring the council's insecurity about the Fountain redesign. If reversing a bad decision becomes nearly impossible, then public comment is rendered useless. You're not fooling anyone, Mr. Erickson, with your language. We all know that words like expedite, streamline, roadblocks, barriers, we know what these really mean in this context. We are the roadblocks. Our voices are the barriers. That's not efficiency, that's entrenchment. So let me speak directly to everyone in this chamber. When E3 passes tonight or whenever it's voted on, it is sending one unmistakable message that any council member who votes on this shameful power grab does not want to hear from us at all. Thank you.
Anita Goswami, followed by Kathy Blavis, followed by Stephanie Harker.
One thing, Anita Goswami, longtime resident of the city of West Hollywood. Couple of things, just a reminder, the actual comments, there's more than 20 comments that are against this. A few things I just want to state, buried in this is prioritizing projects over routine maintenance. So that means our streets, you know, the comment was just made about, you know, sewers, yes, this is our public maintenance. And buried in this is prioritizing project work over routine city maintenance, and that is a key function of a city, is to take care of its residents, to take care of the people that live and work here, and I am concerned about that. This is made worse by the streamlining efforts. Secondly, this, I'm just echoing, this is a blatant power grab by the current city council majority disguised as streamlining. Are you so afraid of your own decisions that you're changing the reversal from three to four? Are you so afraid of the backlash? Is that what's really driving this? What do you need to enthron, what decisions do you need to enthron that you even are proposing this? We had a No Kings march not too long ago, we don't need kings here in West Hollywood. Why do you, we need to follow the dollar and the power. Because who is it that is driving this? Who is it that would benefit from this? What decisions, again, do you want to have enthroned? And literally, I say that because of No Kings. You know, who is it that is benefiting from this? Because it's definitely not the people of West Hollywood. It is not the people that live here and work here and drive through and transit through the city of West Hollywood. Who is it you are protecting? It's not us. Thank you.
Kathy Blavis, followed by Stephanie Harker, followed by Richard Geisbrett.
Good evening, Kathy Blavis, city of West Hollywood. I sure hope you're all listening tonight. I strongly oppose the proposal to streamline capital improvement. Let's call it what it is, a power grab dressed up as efficiency. When government says streamline, it usually means silence the public. By reducing commission and board review and locking in rigid timelines, you're not speeding progress, you're shutting down democracy. Neighbors see the real impacts, traffic, parking lots, noise, long before consultants with fancy PowerPoint presentations show up. Under this plan, our voices come after the damage is done. The proposed four-fifths vote to change a project is also an extreme barrier to accountability. If a project proves flawed, it'll be almost impossible to fix. And "safe streets first," nice slogan, but vague enough to mean anything from lane removals to road diets, all without neighborhood input. Let's be real, this is not public service, it's political theater with a pre-written ending. There are serious ramifications to your vote tonight. You're deciding whether residents have a voice or whether decisions happen behind closed doors. And please spare us the extensive outreach line. If Fountain Avenue project is your example, then outreach must mean hoping people don't notice until it's too late. So if you vote yes tonight, own it. You're voting to silence your own constituents. And councilmember Heilman, you brought up the term "height of hypocrisy." To put this forward at the same time, I'm, I'm sorry?
You said "me."
Oh, I stand corrected. Forgive me. Councilman Erickson, you stated that it was the height of hypocrisy to push the music through and also to not, to not have councilmember Meister's item with the plaque because you want community input. You want to speed this through, you want to streamline, but you want to slow down the music and you want community input when you want community input.
Stephanie Harker, followed by Richard Geisbrett. And then we'll go to any speakers in Zoom.
Good evening, Stephanie Harker, city of West Hollywood. It's a shame, councilmember Erickson, that you consider public comment and input as Let's look at the words used in this item. Develop standardized protocols for infrastructure projects. Don't we already have these? Timelines for each phase of the project design, environmental review, construction, et cetera. Don't we already receive timelines for each phase? Community engagement standards that can be applied to various types of projects, meaning what? One-size-fits-all? Streamlining of commissions and council approval processes. Does this mean hurry up and get it done? Or is it waiving review by bypassing the commissions and boards to save time without all those pesky citizens demanding input? And four, to amend the municipal code to require a four-fifth vote to reverse the approval for infrastructure and capital improvement projects, meaning what? That pretty much we can't reverse what the three-to-two vote approved? I might remind you that two capital improvement projects voted, approved by a five-to-zero vote in recent years were reversed by virtue of the legal process. And citizens outcry. I don't believe community is driving item E3. In fact, many are vehemently opposed to this attempt to take control of projects with as little public involvement as possible. This seems to have come from the Department of Redundancy Department. No, thank you.
Our final speaker in chambers, unless you intend to speak and just haven't yet signed up, please do, Richard Geisbrett.
Richard Geisbrett, resident of West Hollywood since 1995. I'm opposing the removal of public oversight, bypassing of the advisory boards, commissions, hearings and public comment and so forth. It slows things down, it's annoying, but it ultimately does protect the public. I'd also like to observe that the council before you, since I've seen what they've done overnight. over nine, since 95, has made some really poor decisions. Consequently, I support maintaining the simple majority and not changing that for that express reason alone. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any speakers in Zoom, but we do have a number of citizen position slips. We'll have our city clerk read into the record.
Yes, we have Kimberly Winnick in opposition of the item, and we have Judson Fetter, Feeder, in opposition of the item as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll come back to council for any questions or discussion. Councilmember Erickson, would you like to respond to any public comment? Okay, perfect. Well, Vice Mayor Heilman, I see you putting your hand up to speak. I appreciate you jumping in.
The first thing I have is a question, and I think this goes to Kyle Brazil's comment, and this question is for our city attorney. If this four-fifths vote requirement is passed, couldn't a new council simply repeal that ordinance by a majority vote?
The council can adopt an ordinance mandating a four-fifths vote for something that would otherwise require a simple majority vote, but that ordinance can be amended or repealed by a majority vote of the city council because that's set by state law.
Well, then, that, this four-fifths vote is really pointless because a council majority, excuse me, please, a council majority could simply repeal the ordinance by a majority vote, and so I, I guess you've answered my question. It just doesn't seem to make sense. I do want to, I do want to respond to a few comments and a few examples that were used about inefficiencies. Hart Park was one of those, but as I recall, some of the delay with respect to Hart Park was the result of council changing its view on what kind of turf should be installed. So I don't think we can blame the process when some of that inefficiency is the result of our own decision-making or changing our views. The Weaver's Walk, yes, that has taken a long time, but part of that was the result of litigation that was filed and a threat of litigation, and part of it was the result of discovering differences in terms of utilities where we didn't realize they were. So I guess, you know, having gone through a lot of projects, a lot of our routine projects are done very efficiently. Somebody referenced Helen and our street maintenance projects. We do those on an annual basis. We go out to bid, those bids are approved, the projects are completed, we sign off on the completion. So I think a lot of the routine projects are done very effectively and very efficiently. The bigger projects where there's something new proposed or a major change, they're not designed to be efficient. I, I think sometimes, and apart from this item, I think cities oftentimes get criticized for not being businesslike and not being efficient. We're not supposed to be efficient entirely. Getting a lot of public input, businesses don't have to do that. They just, you know, the CEO says, "Do this," and it gets done. But we're not a business in that respect. We're a public agency, and public input is critical. I, and I have been on the council when we have approved a project only to see it later overturned by either a vote of the public or by a change in the council, and some members of the council here have been part of that change. It's not pleasant to have a project that you've worked for reversed, but that's part of how government works. So I do understand the desire to eliminate unnecessary delays, but I don't think having public input and vigorous public input is an unnecessary delay. I think it's part of our governmental processes. That's why I cannot support this tonight.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Meister?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. So Vice Mayor Heilman said a lot, which I agree with, and I would also add, one of the public mentioned Weaver's Walk. The original Weaver's Walk was supposed to be a park with just an art piece, and then it came back to council, I wasn't on council at the time, and it came back, an art project with some grass. And that's why that project was stopped, because the community who wanted a parklet on that street said, "No, that's not what we talked about. That's not what we wanted. We didn't want this to become just an art piece." And that's one of the reasons that that changed. And then the other reason was because of, as Vice Mayor said, litigation. If we didn't have a majority rules of three-two, then Plummer Park would have, what, 75 or 90 less trees? And we wouldn't be doing what we're doing now, which is, which is public outreach in the proper way. And we all have been to Plummer Park, and we all have seen that that park works. And one of the thing, one of the most beautiful parts about the park is, is, are the trees. And had the public not stopped that, that infrastructure project, it would have been a totally different project. And, and, and at the time, when council went forward with that, they thought that was the right thing, but then it changed, and council changed. And council changes are representative of the public. That's, that's why council changes. And, you know, if you go down this road, then, then you can also say, well, you know, the public and council spent, and staff, spent five years writing a general plan, right? That's supposed to last for 30 years or whatever it is, 25, 30, 40 years. Well, then why not have a four-one vote for every ZTA that you want to change, every zone text amendment that you want to make on that general plan? Better yet, let's do it for development agreements. Yeah, for billboards and for projects, four-one. And let's see how developers feel about that and how the public feels about that and how you feel about that. You, you can't just say this and then not do that. And I'm not saying to do it because I think it's wrong. I think that, that, that this is not democratic. This is not the way West Hollywood works, and this is not how our community wants this to be. And then the other example that someone brought up was, and I think actually it was you, Councilmember Erickson, about the San Vicente Boulevard project. Well, that project's not going anywhere. They haven't spent a lot of money on it because this, the council, the last council said, "If you can find grant money to support that, fine, but we're not putting in that kind of money into this project." So it's not, it's, you know, the, that infrastructure thing, you know, it, it, it didn't happen the way it's, it, it sounded like what you said. And so, and also, there could be another council in another few years that says, you know what? That's not one of our priorities. We don't want that project to happen. And, and so it won't happen. And you'll either, you'll have community that will support that because they voted for you, and that's what they want, right? You're not going to always have community agree with you. That's, that's just the way it is. And, and sometimes you win, and sometimes you lose, and sometimes, you know, projects are approved, which I'm not happy about, and sometimes projects are approved that I'm happy about, and sometimes I'm part of the majority, sometimes I'm not part of the majority. That's just the way it is. That's, as Vice Mayor said, that's how government works. And this whole idea of a "safe streets first" protocol versus roadway improvements or route, on roadway improvements over routine maintenance projects? That's, that's ridiculous. That's actually slowing down things that actually need to be done immediately. So I, I can't support this, this item at all. I, I wish that we didn't even have to hear this item, but I, you know, maybe it's good that we all talk about it.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilmember Hang next.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank my colleague for bringing this item forward. I am generally in support of this item. It does support our small businesses by cutting the red tape and reducing any expensive delays. It modernizes outdated signage rules to reflect new technology.
Run the roadblock infrastructure item.
Sorry, the, so I do support this item. I do believe that the supermajority, I believe, is a good idea. The amount of money that is spent on staff time to research and evaluate and analyze and come to a decision in terms of reviewing and approving a capital improvement, a capital improvement project is necessary. And I, I disagree with what my colleague said. You're basically saying that the voices of those who support the item are not voices at all, that those who just come and oppose the item are the right voices. So in a sense, this is where I support this item. I think it will bring safety to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I, looking at the fourth recommendation, I think it's clear that under, you know, given the state law condition, that a council can effectively play a back-and-forth between a forfeths amendment, change the municipal code just to change that, I think we should push that piece off the table. But to Councilmember Meister's point, I do think there is a good reason that we're having a discussion tonight. The efficiency, as we see another streamlining item later in the agenda tonight, we had another streamlining item around housing development projects earlier this year. We've done a lot to streamline the billboard work itself as well, so we're trying to create more efficient processes that I don't think are about removing community engagement whatsoever. I think it's really about helping under, create a set of expectations throughout the process of when community engagement will happen, and that it doesn't become this ad hoc, you know, expectation that there's another meeting that can always happen, but that this is the finite timeline that we're having it. When it comes to something like the WeHo40 strategic plan, for example, there is a set timeline under which every piece of community engagement in all the very many ways would happen before it comes back to council, and that is the container that that project happens within, and that is how it moves forward. There isn't another moment where that plan comes back to the community for review. It's a plan that gets implemented and moved forward. So there are many plans and processes that have this sort of finite, clear container communicated from the outset, and others don't. And I think the challenge that, what I see here being brought forward is an opportunity to bring some more of that standardized process to places within our infrastructure work that don't currently have it. And I do think that's a value add to the community that may otherwise misunderstand what the process may be out of assumption that there will always be another community meeting, as it sometimes feels like is the case, but really set that expectation from the outset. We do have a public dashboard that we use to monitor projects, and I was reviewing it, and sometimes they aren't updated as quickly or as rapidly, and I think that's an area of attention that we need to make sure we're attentive to as the public is, you know, asked to utilize those spaces to get the information from the city. And if we're, as a city, not updating those as efficiently as possible, then we're missing that opportunity to do our own work to streamline and better communicate these processes. So I want to, rather than looking at item four and five, which are about the four-fifths vote and approval for that, that change to the municipal code, I think item one, directing staff to develop standardized protocols for infrastructure projects, is a, is a good thing. And I think we should see what that could look like, and there may be a varied amount of them. And to Vice Mayor Heilman's point earlier about, you know, the many ways that government will continue to unfold and how many times, it could prove to this council that that's not actually realistic. But I think right now what we're asking for is a sense to see and understand what might be possible when it comes to applying to our infrastructure projects. For those that are in support of these things, the sense that this is going to continue to drag on and on, and they have to keep showing up, and is this ever really going to happen? And similarly, for folks who are opposed, the sense of, well, we're going to keep showing up to meetings and saying, "No." At what point are we able to move forward with something and then start to deal with the other side of that? Right now, we're dealing with a realm of, you know, uncertainty and of ideas casting into the future. Once we have a project that is certain, we can really start to deal with any expected challenges, whatever that may, that project may be. So I think that's sort of what I'm excited about when it comes to this item, is how do we think about phases of work and creating those expectations together? The second piece of this item is about, oh, sorry, just to explain the rest of it, the first recommendation, having the timelines request, community engagement standards that can be applied, and then the streamlining of commission and council. Similarly, we know that commission advisory boards, their workloads, they have one meeting a month, their workloads can become immense. I believe it's, it feels like it should be possible that we can project to those commissions what their workload will be, when they will, as commissions, hear these items. I think that can help make sure that we're not having over-complex agendas for staff to have to manage any given night, but that that's set out. I don't see anywhere in here that we're removing. I really think it's about clarifying and communicating a process. The second item around adopting a "safe streets" protocol to focus on roadway improvements, I, I, I think about this in the context of an existing document, again, the Vision Zero document, a place where we already have a set of understandings of where our next perceived challenges are, but it's a document that I bet very many people in this room don't refer to often and doesn't often, maybe a couple people. But I think that, for me, it's a question that I've long heard kicked around, around how something like infrastructure projects, especially those that correlate with public safety, are reviewed in a public way as a conversation that feels like it's intersecting both of these spaces. And so when I hear "safe streets" protocol to focus on roadway improvements, I think what we're asking for is something more like a commission, a joint commission meeting of like public safety, transportation, to identify and prioritize, help the council prioritize existing projects that may be better prioritized through the lens of a joint public safety and transportation overlap. So I, again, I'm glad we're having this discussion because I think in this are a lot of different ways that we can do the work of better communicating and bringing more transparency to the work that we're undertaking while not removing community engagement at all, but really helping direct it into more efficient ways. And then I just want to also say that, you know, the expectation that while we are a 1.9 square mile city, a small city with resources, we have to collaborate with so many other agencies. It is maddening how many times, you know, in my own neighborhood, there's a project that is held up from completion because SCE won't get back to the job. And that's not in the city's hands, but it is our city and our staff that is responding endlessly to the neighbors who want this project to be over in my neighborhood, and we're tied up in the process of another agency. So I recognize the way our small city staff accomplishes incredible work in a very complex dynamic working across this region. And so I just want to constantly manage the expectations that we are not a full-service city that has the ability to go out and get these things done all of ourselves. We cannot act or operate as if that's the case, but we do need to commend the staff for facilitating and coordinating tremendously complex projects across a multitude of agencies that don't really care how well-resourced we are or how attentive we are to our projects. They've got their own business to attend to, and that's the reality we're constantly up against and why I think this has to be understood as more flexible while we're investing the intention to keep things moving along. So I think something under the second item around a "safe streets" first protocol may look more different, like a joint meeting of these two commissions, if you're amenable to this idea. And just hearing some of the, the pushback already from other council members, where else we could go? The final thing I'll say is I do think there is something to be said about the item the member of the public raised. It was already used as a, a moment of opportunity under the Sunset Strip Music Festival item, and that's the council member's financial threshold or signing authority. I do think that's something we need to look at, and I don't know that, or maybe we do give the direction under this item to have staff bring back a recommendation, maybe based on what other cities are doing, how things have changed and evolved in other places. But I do feel like we're often in a position where a contract that is already directed, you know, as part of a process, has to come back to this council. And to the public, it feels like, are we discussing this again? When really, it's just the next step of initiative. When really, it's just the next step of initiating the workflow before it comes back to council. So I think that's an area that we could really lean into in terms of creating more efficiency on the work-staff load side, as well as ensuring that the community understands what council direction looks like and where it's coming from. So those are some of the thoughts I have. I know I said a lot, and I want to turn it back over to Councilmember Erickson if there's any, I guess there's a few other comments from our colleagues first. Okay, and then we'll hand it back to you to wrap all this up and see how you want to package a motion. Vice Mayor Heilmann.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate your comments. On your first point about number one recommendation, having standardized protocols, I guess my concern about that is that every project is so different. So a normal street widening might be very different from the San Vicente's, you know, sky sculpture project. Maybe we could direct, maybe the outcome of this is that for any infrastructure project, when it is first brought to council for discussion, staff lays out a timeframe and a public process for that particular type of project, rather than trying to have standardized processes for every different infrastructure project when they're all so different. So I think that might make sense. The safe streets, I like your idea of having some kind of joint meeting with transportation, public safety. What I object to in the item is the safe streets over routine maintenance. Because in my mind, routine maintenance is part of safe streets. Whether you're a driver, a cyclist, or a pedestrian, if a street is filled with potholes, it's not safe. So I don't, and I don't know that that was the intention, but talking about how do we elevate and prioritize projects that are designed to address some of the concerns you addressed, I think that's something that we can have a conversation about. I appreciate you removing four and five from the discussion, and I hope that will be removed from any motion that is made. And I'm okay with looking at the threshold for staff-approved contracts, but I do want to express some concern, not concern with any of our current staff, but the reason why you don't give staff authority to enter into contracts, as you know, is because in other cities, that results in, you know, problems with expenditures that are not promoting a public good. So I want to make sure that we don't authorize spending at a high level that would run the risk of our city funds not being used appropriately. But I'm certainly opening, open to looking at whether our current threshold is consistent with what other cities are doing in this area.
Councilmember Erickson, do you want to respond?
Yeah, great. Thank you very much to my colleagues, as well as to members of the public. So I think what I'm hearing is, and the reasons for recommendations four and five is there are going to be state legislation to actually overturn that rule in this next session. So I was actually getting this ahead of that, but happy to have that conversation at a future date. Because Sacramento, local control, it's becoming a very big issue, and that is an issue that is going to be taken up in a different way through statewide legislation in the coming months that will be introduced. So more on that.
And I hope we'll oppose it.
Yeah, well, when the legislation is drafted, I'm sure we'll get it. So happy to move that away because if staff want to push that off, but we will be following that, and I'm happy to make sure our city team is aware of that when that comes. But it sounds like move option, recommending option one and including, were there any additional changes, Mayor?
I think Vice Mayor Heilmann said project-specific timelines that are communicated as we introduce.
And I think ensuring that timelines for each phase of the project, so amending that to include timelines for each phase of the project upon introduction, something around those, how would you like to phrase it to me?
Yeah, it's sort of the idea was that when any infrastructure project comes forward, staff will also come forward with sort of a expected timeline and the expected process for this particular type of infrastructure project.
Including that community engagement strategy.
Of course.
That's the case.
Because that doesn't exist currently, which is the reason. And so I'm happy with that amended language. So recommendation one. For recommendation two, the reason why I'm happy to include improvements on public safety improvements, as well as continuing routine maintenance projects when applicable, as we said and I said, I believe, four to five months ago, and I gave the update about when our streets have actually been updated. Fountain Avenue has never been updated completely since the foundation of the city. So routine maintenance is great, but, you know, there's still a lot of issues on the road regardless. So including that, amending that language to read improvements on public safety improvements and continuing routine maintenance projects when applicable.
I think the mayor's suggestion was that we would move forward with routine maintenance and that we would also have a study session with our public safety and our transportation commission about implementation and prioritization of safe streets proposals that we've already talked about.
And using Vision Zero, our Vision Zero plan.
Our Vision Zero, yes.
Okay, great. And then are you fine with recommendation three?
Having staff come back with recommendations in the first quarter.
Great, and then we'll table four and five.
Yes.
Great, sounds good. So that would be my motion. Madam City Clerk, do you have all of that? City Attorney, I just saw you look at me.
Was the contracting authority?
Oh, yes, sorry, the threshold for staff to come back, maybe within the same timeline of first quarter of '26 of a threshold update? Good?
Just make one comment. And I just want to make sure that with all of this, we continue to be a flexible city, right? Because you can say that there are going to be standards on community engagement. You all might think that, you know, or we all might think that something is, well, like Hart Park with the grass, right? Like, we all thought, okay, yeah, fake grass, that's the way to go. Then all of a sudden, the community said, wait, wait, wait. We're not the same as WeHo Park, we're different. And that is what also extended that timeline on getting that project approved. So there has to be flexibility to consider that communities, all of a sudden, you know, they, this was not an issue. We didn't think it was an issue, but it was an issue. And it's not necessarily because, you know, people aren't paying attention. It's because they don't have all those little details until all of a sudden, we're already having the meeting saying, we're doing this. Or we're proposing this, or staff is proposing this. So I just, you know, somewhere, I just want to make sure that when you say community engagement standards that can be applied to various types of projects, just like in the last item with the billboards, they had ABC, and then all of a sudden, the language was changed to say, oh, but if we need to change the standards, we'll change the standards if we have to change the standards. You know, where is this any different?
I think the intent of the item is that when items, infrastructure items come forward, there would be a proposed timeline and sort of an expected timeline. But I think we're all wise enough to recognize that things change, and sometimes that timeline will not be adhered to because something new came up and we have to pivot, so.
Yeah, and we don't have these processes. I mean, we don't have a, we can't go back and say, when this was introduced, we were supposed to do X, Y, and Z. It's an implied idea that we are going to do that, and what we do do. But the issue that we always hear is that people come back and say, well, I never heard about X, I never heard about Y. Or when they do hear it, they come, there's a vote, and then a year later, they're like, wait, didn't you already vote on this? You're voting again, or again, or again? And that's, the repetition is, I think, the problem in that way. And it's unfair to, to the public who come out and expect different outcomes in different ways when the process is needing to be standardized and followed. So that's.
Well, then maybe there needs to be a community engagement plan to go along with those standards. Because if you don't.
That's what's here.
Okay.
Community engagement standards that can be applied to various types of projects.
Right, but I mean also a plan that is presented at the time of a project. To say, we are planning to send out mailers, we are planning to put out, you know, door hangers on every, you know, so that the public can also say, hey, can you also do this?
I think that's exactly what we're talking about.
All right, well, it doesn't say it. And standards aren't necessarily the same as plans.
I think the idea is the same, though, just we're not going to bicker over words. Community engagement standards, it's meant to say, what are we doing when it comes to community engagement? How do we standardize a process that can be communicated? I think what we're getting to the place is that we can't create one process that'll cover all types of infrastructure. But what we agreed on is that each project can have a standard list of those sort of community engagement tools that we're going to use, and we communicate that strategy to the public at the onset of that project.
I think some of the frustration that the public has is that sometimes projects come forward and we approve the project conceptually, and then we have to go out and we have to get and hire somebody to actually be the architect and designer of the project. So then there's another vote, and then it comes back to us with their final plans, and then we have to approve that. Then we have to put it out to bid, and then it comes back to us to approve the bids. Sometimes we can't, and we have to piecemeal the project in a different way, and then it comes back to us another time. So I do understand the frustration, but again, that's part of the way that we sometimes have to work because we can't just say, okay, here's the concept, go do it. We do need to retain the control over the projects and over all of those significant contracts that are entered into.
So I'll make that motion. We're still clear, Madam City Clerk? You're good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we're going to take a break really quick before we come back to item E4, the advisory. Oh, just kidding, it'd be a new business that we come back to, housing element implementation. We'll take a break for 10 minutes and come back.
And nearly tripled the amount for the market rate requirements. The current RENA production for the 2021 through 2029 six cycle is represented with this graph. It shows that we're about halfway through the six step cycle for planning. And we are lagging on every income category, as we've shown before. So we have about 1% for moderate completed, 6% for lower income, and 24% for market rate. It's important to note that the majority of affordable units within the city comes from the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, either through the production of onsite units or either through the funds that are given to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and therefore help produce light tech projects or 100% affordable projects. So the specific objectives for this study are really derived from the housing element. One, we have to align with state law, specifically state law density bonus. Two, we have to maintain the IHO requirement or at least provide feasibility for any changes. We are also continuing to serve the lowest income households and provide financial feasibility. The analysis that we modeled showed a couple of different things. And we based the factors on aligning state and city schedules, which is our income and rent schedules, as well optimizing the affordability mix to be in alignment with state density bonus law. As a quick overview, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, also known as the IHO, is a mandatory project or mandatory requirement from the city. It applies to two plus unit projects. It also divides the application based on small projects and large projects. For a small project, they can choose to pay an in lieu fee if they do not choose to build an affordable unit onsite. For large projects, they can build 20% affordable in the project itself, but it relies on the city's Schedule A and Schedule B. The state density bonus law is a voluntary project that applicants can choose to pursue. It applies to five plus units. And it grants a bonus based on the number of market rate and affordability requirements that are provided at a certain mix in a sliding scale. The specific issues that this project or this study has really addressed is first and foremost aligning the city's Schedule A and Schedule B, which regulates affordable housing units in the city with state schedules, also known as HCD, income limits. You can see on the right, the graph demonstrates the difference between the WHEO maximum rents, for example, for one bedroom versus the HCD maximum rent, showing that WHEO is definitely much lower than what the HCD income schedules require. This is important to know for a few reasons. One, it provides inconsistency, the current way that we are reporting for RENA, specifically for our annual progress reports. We are reporting incorrect labels to the number of dollar amounts that are attributed to every income category. It also does not allow us to capture the correct credit. For example, most of the cities that, most of the units produced in the city is extremely low or very low, but we are mislabeling them for moderate or low income, for example. So we took a look at different policy options for specifically large projects, which we define as 11 or plus units. The baseline option, which is the first one, merely changes the labels of the specific income categories, but does not change the material income level at all. So that's called our baseline option. Option A dedicates a 15% to ELI, but also allows flexibility by requiring an in lieu, or I'm sorry, an in lieu fee of 5%. Option B also does this, but instead of focuses our requirements on VLI. And then option C splits this to mirror state density bonus law, which maximizes a 15% VLI with 5% moderate income and produces a 70% density bonus. Option D, which is staff recommendation tonight, spreads across the most affordability income categories. So 5% is for ELI, 10% for VLI, 5% to LI. This would only achieve a 15% density bonus in state law. So 20% is attributed would be through a local density bonus that the city would require or allow to happen. Option E actually studies a higher inclusionary at 25%, with 20% being built through 15% VLI, 5% moderate, and then that 5% through an in lieu fee. It is important to know that option A, option B, as well as option E, provides an in lieu fee component, which was a requirement for the program to study in lieu and onsite requirements and what the difference would be. It's also important to know that feasibility for all these options and prototypes really depended on the amount of density bonus that was associated with the affordability mix and the affordability ratio itself. So for the policy options, we also showed in a different format, which is applied to, for example, 100 unit project here. So you can see that the green, the dark green represents more market rate. And then the different colored yellow, blue, orange, and gray represents the affordability requirement that would be applied. So it's a different way of showing the previous table. Option A has a 15% ELI with an 85% market rate or 85 units for market rate, producing the 50% density bonus. So we can see here that all of the projects here has shown a 15% to 25% inclusionary rate. Projects could obviously go up to 100% density bonus if they go beyond the inclusionary rate as well. This table shows the financial feasibility of all these options. So for the green, we're trying to maximize, or a developer traditionally tries to maximize the rent and the amount of profit. And we consider return on costs or an ROC of 12% as being feasible. So most of the options are feasible, except for option A, which has a 10% ROC. We, as I mentioned, staff proposes option D for the recommendation because it spreads the affordability requirements across the most income levels. It also achieves financial feasibility, as shown through the green ROC, 12% and higher. It also would require the city to provide a 20% local density bonus to make up the difference to 70%. Small projects is a little bit different. We split that into two different categories, two to four units and five to 10 units. The 15% set aside would apply to both of these buckets of units. But the difference is the two to four units would not necessarily need to provide a unit onsite, but pay through an in lieu fee. The five to 10 units would be a must build requirement of at least one unit. And then any fraction thereafter would pay through an in lieu fee that would go to Affordable Housing Trust Fund. This recommendation also mirrors the previous recommendation of the Inclusionary Housing Study from 2022, which was built into the housing element. So the implications of these changes would be it only applies to new development and not any existing units that are currently regulated through our Schedule A and Schedule B. It does have an impact on the existing waitlist for inclusionary units or affordable units within the city. It does not remove any households. It merely increases the, it merely increases the opportunity for new households to be applied to the waitlist because their income categories are much higher. And so the only gray area that may exist as well is the displacement of households due to redevelopment. Any households that were in the previous Schedule A and Schedule B, if they were to, you know, have, write a first return and come back to the development, they may be subject to the new income HCD schedules rather than the previous Schedule A and Schedule B. The timeline is separated into two stages primarily. The first is the stage for policy recommendation. We went to the Rent Stabilization Commission, the Planning Commission, October 16th, and we're here today. This would determine the direction of the legislative changes to follow, which would be the Zone Text Amendment itself. And that would be coming back to Planning Commission in next year to be followed then obviously by adoption for City Council. And that concludes staff's presentation, but we're happy to answer any questions as well as consultants here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know we have a number of speakers signed up in public comment. Do my colleagues want to ask any questions of staff now? Or should we go to public comment? Comment, comment first? Okay, great. We'll go to comment first then. First speaker we have signed up to speak is Andrew Solomon, followed by Anita Gasswami, followed by Jacob Pierce.
Hello again. Andrew Solomon, speaking as a resident. I'll start with the good that I agree with in this ordinance, aligning our local income limits with the state limits that they use. This is long overdue. It'll simplify the process, our administration, our reporting. But I don't believe that we have enough data to weigh in on the rest of the proposed ordinance. We only studied 20% and 25%. The proposed changes in option D, increase costs especially for small projects, without adding any meaningful new incentives for them. This ultimately hurts housing production. It doesn't help it. The result is fewer small projects. And fewer projects means fewer uppercase A affordable units. If you look at the study that we're relying upon this and you go to exhibit A, you go to page 55, it's where their pro formas start on the study from the Housing Workshop. The pro formas average for market rate monthly rent is $6,630 per month in our three zones. Just to repeat that, the model states that this ordinance, this ordinance works and projects will pencil if the average market rate rent is $6,630 a month. But one of the most common complaints that we hear about housing in West Hollywood is that it's either stalled or the only thing that you're delivering is new luxury units. Well, they, they have to be. You have to subsidize the costs of our incredible inclusionary burden. It's not a developer tax. It's a tax on future renters. The costs get passed down. So align income limits is great, but I do think that we need more data on different inclusionary levels before weighing in on the rest of the ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you. Anita Gasswami is next, followed by Jacob Pierce. And then I saw Victor Olmachenko signed up. Anita.
Hi there. I'm Anita Gasswami, resident, long-term resident of West Hollywood. And I was at the Planning Commission meeting where they discussed this. There is much good in what has been developed here. We need to be looking at a lot of these issues. However, this issue is really complex. I mean, it's not just one issue. It's lots of things in there, including whether we measure by unit, by square feet. I mean, there's lots of different elements in this. The proposals rely on, you know, this is part of ZIP. It relies on ZIP, but I still don't know what the rest of ZIP is either. I am concerned about a couple of things. First of all, council should not be making policy or giving direction where there are so many open questions. I think that the direction should be to go back and have staff review those, get that, provide more clarity so you can make that decision. Because what you direct ends up being what we are all needing to live in or, you know, walk by or whatever it is. This is, you know, in our town. And I just don't think this is ready yet. I mean, all due respect to the work that's been done, but I don't think it's been ready yet. Secondly, I'm actually asking, when we look at ZIP, I would like to see what all of these propose, you know, that, I want to see that actual deck that has not been made public, to my knowledge, that says, these are all of the elements of ZIP, not just the, we're going to go ahead and put housing in, you know, in, remove zoning in R1. I want to see the rest of it that says, this is the complete program for ZIP. These are the different things we have. This is what we want to accomplish. This is a must do. This is something which isn't. So I do request that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jacob Pierce, followed by Victor Olmachenko.
Hello, Mayor Byers and members of the West Hollywood City Council. My name is Jacob Pierce. I'm a policy associate for Abundant Housing LA, supporting housing at all income levels, in addition to tenant protections, funding for affordable housing. And we want to see a West Hollywood where the amazing people who call this community home are able to afford their housing costs without forking over a third or more of their paycheck every month. So I actually agree with a lot of what the previous speaker said in terms of opportunities to go back and get some more information here. I really appreciate the context from staff about the RENA cycle, the previous RENA cycle in West Hollywood. In the sixth RENA cycle, West Hollywood is actually pretty far behind. And we have serious concerns about the feasibility that informed some of the recommendations before you. The goal basically should be to deliver lots of affordable housing of all types at scale. In short, what we don't want is one where, a future where new market rate units are, have to be incredibly expensive, expensive at a luxury price point. have to be incredibly expensive, expensive at a luxury price point in order to subsidize those deeply affordable units, which are the units that we do want. So, yeah, and we're especially concerned about provisions that would make it harder to build small-scale housing complexes under 10 units in size, as well as senior housing. And we want, we ask that you direct staff to conduct an analysis of more factors, including how inclusionary zoning relates to the city's need to build 3,900 homes by 2029, and also how to make it feasible to build more affordable market rate homes. We do support aligning the affordability schedule with the state density bonus law. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Viktor Olmachenko, I believe, is our final speaker in chambers.
Viktor Olmachenko, longtime resident here in West Hollywood. I've been a renter, then I was an owner, and I'm now a very happy rent stabilized tenant with a wonderful landlord who keeps up his building. And I've seen a lot of changes in this city, but what I believe we need to have some focus on is that this city, from the time I moved here, has been very progressive in terms of its requiring inclusionary affordable units in new housing development projects going back 25 years. Over the years, we required 20% or more units in new housing developments, much more than other cities like the great city of Los Angeles, when I remember meeting with people there, where they only were requiring 5% to 10% units. As a renter, I've also seen over the years, or as a resident here over the years, the demolition of many rent stabilized units, over 1,000 rent stabilized units. Yes, we may get back 2,000 new units because they can get higher and bigger with the density bonuses, but we've had a net loss of those kinds of affordable rent stabilized units. So I think we should take more credit for what we have been doing in terms of requiring inclusionary housing here. Beverly Hills, only about 10%. I think LA's gone up to 10%. Maybe abundant housing LA could get the big city of LA to have a bigger percentage of inclusionary housing. So I've looked over the report. I've talked with some people. I think that the, there's an effort here to increase, like looking at the new developments. I believe the more inclusionary housing we can get, even when it's in the smaller developments, like I see the two to five will only have to put in lieu of money, the five to 10 will put in at least one unit plus a fractional amount. I think this is a step in the right direction, and I hope that you go forward with this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have any speakers in Zoom. We'll go to our citizen position slips. So we received a few. Ed Holman in support of this item, Michael Seldich in support of this item, Virginia Gillick in support of this item, Stephanie Harker in support of this item, and Kathy Blavos in support of this item. Thank you. So the task before us tonight, there's two items here. One around directing staff to prepare a Zone Text Amendment to update the requirements, and the other around aligning the findings from the feasibility study in accordance with state density bonus law. Want to bring it back to the council to see if there are questions for clarity on these items. Vice Mayor Heilman, you've been great at jumping in first. I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the speakers. I appreciate the work that's been done on this, and I'm largely supportive of your recommendations. I do want to point out, can you go to the screen where you have the rent levels for comparing our current rent levels versus the HCD rent levels? So as you can see, I understand why you're making the recommendation, because regardless of whether we kept our own separate inclusionary requirement with our own rent levels, under state law, a developer can take advantage of the state requirements. And so it's pointless for us to have a separate rent schedule when we know every developer is going to take advantage of what the state is offering. But it's, it's pretty stark here in terms of how much more the allowable rent is under the state's density bonus and incentive program compared to our inclusionary program that existed. So I'm not happy about that. And those who are saying that they want us to adopt the state program, I hope they recognize that it is resulting in a significant increase. The, the recommendation of item D, I support that as well with the distribution among the low-income categories. It eliminates what we previously had, which was alternating low and moderate. But when I look at the, the low-income rent of 2,000 a month, that, that's more consistent with what we would have been saying is moderate income. So I, I understand that as well. The, the argument that I heard somebody raise that we shouldn't have the in lieu fee for the lower income or the lower category, I, I think the study demonstrates that it doesn't really affect the feasibility of the project. But I do want to ask our consultant in terms of the market rate charge. And I think that was a comment that one of the speakers made. Where did you get that number? We don't make up what the market will bear in terms of housing. So that isn't something, we're saying, oh, developers, you should charge 6,000 a month for a new two-bedroom apartment. Where did you get those numbers?
Thank you, Councilmember Heilman, for asking that question. In the report, in the appendix, E2 highlights the market data that we use to kind of inform the pro formas. And what we do in developing the pro formas is we look at new construction comparable buildings that have recently been built and are currently leasing by market rate developers. And in the appendix, you'll see different projects that were built in 2023, 2024, for example, that are renting at, market rate developers renting at 6,500 a month for a two-bedroom apartment. And the range can go from, you know, 5,000 to as high as 9,000. And so the number that we picked was a kind of an average that represented what we see is currently leasing in the market.
And the, the pro forma you're creating, you're creating to show that our inclusionary requirement doesn't affect the feasibility of the project. The project can still get built, and the developer can get a fair return on their investment. And that's the same kind of pro forma that a developer would use in considering whether to buy property and to move forward with development?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Councilmember Meister.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions. Are you recommending that the, whatever option is chosen is the same for commercial versus residential? And does that have to happen that way?
Yeah. We are proposing that option D applies to both commercial and residential zones.
But does it have to be that way?
Not necessarily. The city council can decide to, you know, split how it's applied by zoning district.
Because it, it does seem like it's sort of like a one-size-fits-all, and our residential neighborhoods are, are very different from our commercial corridors. And I would think that we would want to make sure that this is tailored in that way. Regarding the commercial zones, it says in the report that, that you are not recommending a square footage percentage for, for the housing, for the affordable housing, or all the housing.
So are you referring to the 2020 directive regarding the inclusionary calculation based on floor area instead of dwelling units?
Right.
Yes. So that directive asked staff to analyze an inclusionary rate based on 20% of gross residential floor area would be attributed to affordable residential floor area.
But you're, you're sort of making it an either/or, like it either should be, should be a percentage or, or a unit requirement. Why can't it be both?
We have not something both, but something similar for projects that have 41 units and above today in our inclusionary housing ordinance, where they could provide 20% dwelling units or 20% based on floor area. So that's something where we've considered, or it's actually codified, they could choose whichever measurement fits the both. I think the directive originally read from 2020 that the 20% floor area would, would only apply if it's greater than if it was a 20% dwelling units. So that's a case where both is applied. We could choose to do that as well. But we ultimately, as staff, determined that basing on dwelling units would be simpler in order for administrative tracking throughout the entitlement and permitting process, because it does allow us to calculate that across the board and make sure that, you know, we're tripping the correct requirements and following that with RENA compliance.
Right. But you could, but technically, you could do both. You could say, okay, there, this is a 10,000 square foot project, and we want 2,000, I'm just making up numbers, 2,000 square feet to be affordable, and of that, then we say X number of units.
We could potentially do that. I think the issue there is we did bring up that specific standard to a developer roundtable with our other consultant, Harrison Associates, and it was generally the rigidity of those, that application of an and scenario was disfavorable, just because it doesn't offer that flexibility. And I think the intention of the original 2020 directive was to reduce the production of luxury units. And so we felt that there was other ways to get to that through different, more effective strategies, probably through the zoning improvement program that allows us to calibrate the floor area with density and based on a sliding scale. So it's a different way, but offers more flexibility to get to that end result.
Could you tell me how many market rate units were, were constructed in the last RENA cycle?
Yes.
Well, I think it was around 2,000.
The, the last two cycles, it was near 2,000.
Right. So it was near 2,000. So did anyone study to see if the rents went down by building so many units?
Have the rents gone down in West Hollywood, to your knowledge, remember?
Have they gone down in West Hollywood with building 2,000 units? Because, because there seems to be a, a thought here that the more units we, market rate units we build, rents will go down. But that doesn't seem to be the case, is it? No. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Whatever happened to the R3, R4 study?
We were referring to multifamily standards.
What's that?
The multifamily standards for R3 and R4. So that has been folded into the zoning improvement program. We've been doing calibration on the zoning for density and floor area, as well as introducing design standards that were originally from that study.
Okay. And someone said that this study relies on ZIP in order to, you know, that that's, is that true?
I do want to clarify that that's not necessarily the case. It's mostly, more accurately, the inverse. So ZIP is currently understanding every option. We're, we're studying every single option as a potential. We'll be able to more nimbly narrow the scope once we have a direction from the city council. But right now, the zoning improvement program is not contingent on necessarily one option. It's really, you know, we're studying all of them at the same time.
Okay. Because it does seem like, you know, all of this relies on ZIP, and what happens with ZIP really relies on where the rail goes, right? So it just, it, it seems like this is, this is going before the cart. The horse is going before the cart.
Yeah. Any recommendations that do come from ZIP will ultimately have to be based on the assumptions that we're applying from the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, because otherwise we can't necessarily adjust for financial feasibility correctly and the assumptions that come with that.
Yeah. So, so we use the results of tonight's discussion and conversation. That will actually calibrate what we're studying in the ZIP program. So that will affect, you know, the densities that are going to be proposed or explored. So it'd be fantastic to get direction on a particular option, so then we can at least, you know, provide that calibration within the ZIP program itself.
Does, does this consider ADUs at all? This, what, you're doing this thing?
The housing element does have objectives specifically to promote affordable ADUs, but the specific inclusionary housing study does not address that. That would most likely be through a different study or effort.
But why not? Because there are buildings being built with storage parking spaces that are being approved by, you know, planning or Planning Commission, and then those spaces after the fact are being converted to apartments, to ADUs, and we are not getting any affordable units out of them.
So state law preempts the city from actually requiring affordable units or in lieu fees on ADUs, except when they're sort of part of a larger sort of multifamily project?
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah. A larger project. That's what I'm saying, though. That, that, does this take into consideration that you might have a multifamily, you know, multifamily project, and then there's, you know, there's parking somewhere, but then it ends up, or, or, or storage space, and then it ends up being made into ADU or, or apartments later, or JDU, whatever. And, and it's not part of the calculation for the affordable units. How do we, like, is there something that we can do to make sure that it is? Or something to think about?
Hmm. Yeah. I don't know if this state allows us to make those restrictions with regards to converting approved units to ADUs, but...
I do, I do want to mention, so we took an ADU ordinance in front of the city council not too long ago. I believe in that was October 6th, that was approved and adopted. That, the code that was part of that ordinance did say that affordability can only apply voluntarily for ADUs per state law. This is part of the issue that when we had our original ADU ordinance, we were putting deed restrictions for ADUs for affordability. We went to HCD, they flagged this as an issue, and we had to come back with the follow-up ordinance to clarify.
Right. Okay. So let me, let me go back then and not use the word ADU, and say, what if they convert storage space to an apartment? That's within the building. So for example, you have a building that you have on the, on the ground floor is, is a community space or something like that, then all of a sudden, they want to convert it to an apartment, I mean, or two apartments. So the calculations are, are changing, right? But you've already approved the project, and then it doesn't go back, doesn't go back to, you know, Planning Commission or whatever. So is there any way that we can, you know?
Yeah. My understanding of the inclusionary housing ordinance is for new construction. So for a specific change from an area, from a locker room, closet, whatever the case may be, to an apartment, would not necessarily, it may not necessarily trigger the inclusionary housing ordinance, but this is something that I think we need to go back and maybe check. But that's, I think, my understanding so far.
I think the concern is that a project gets approved with 20 units, and then after it's approved and built, there are two more units because they convert parking spaces to ADUs. And now we've calculated the inclusionary based on 20, not on the 22 units. But I, I think based on state law, there's nothing we can do about that.
Yeah. I think, I think we're happy to go take a look at that a little bit closer and look at what state law constraints or what would, would allow in that respect. I think we understand the, the concern for conversion of space to add additional units later and to see, you know, whether this ordinance could address that or not.
Even, even as an in lieu fee, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that there be a I mean, you know, that there be a fee attached to that.
Yeah, so if we didn't study that as part of this, but we could certainly look into that.
Yeah, I guess, I, I just thought that potentially since we're doing the, the small project requirements, right? Like perhaps potentially just the one-off, like one-unit conversions might be exempt, like we might be able not to do anything for those, but potentially maybe if we start looking at, you know, two to four units, maybe at that point that's actually triggered because now we have a small project based on our new requirements with our inclusionary housing ordinance. Or if it's five to 10, then, then we're dealing with a small project, part two.
Well, you have, but you have four or less units and that, that you want us to look at now, so four or less units and five or more units for the smaller project.
Exactly. I'm thinking that's how we could probably apply it, but we'd have to take a little bit more additional research and confirmation.
Okay, I would, I would appreciate that. Did, uh, did the study include looking at, because I, when I looked at your roundtable, you didn't include like existing landlords, like landlord, you know, just of, of existing buildings. And I'm, so I'm just wondering, you know, if you got any kind of input from, from them and how this could affect existing buildings, especially since most are, are, you know, some are rent controlled and then there are rent stabilized buildings, the, the potential impacts to existing rent stabilized housing, multi-house, multifamily housing projects?
The intersection of rent stabilized, rent stabilized units and inclusionary units happen due to demolition protections under state law. This would be for the redevelopment of a building. Rent stabilized units are not, would not be impacted by the inclusionary house, housing ordinance, but maybe I'm understanding the question.
Well, I think, I think part of what I'm seeing is every time a new building goes up and we have, you know, market rate units and a couple of inclusionary, whatever, but the existing rent stabilized units, as soon as they go to market rate, they go up way more than they would have been pre all this, right? Like before, a one-bedroom unit would be maybe $1,500 and it would go up to $1,800 when somebody moved out. Now it's going up to $2,500 because the new project has a one-bedroom, that's $4,000. And so you're, you're incentivizing this and I understand and, and, you know, but I think there's got to be a balance if we don't want to lose the rent stabilized units that we have.
Sorry, can we, could you also reword the question, the original question?
Well, I don't know that it's a question or a comment. I mean, it's basically, basically what I'm saying is if we don't, when we study these things, if we don't look at the impacts on what's existing, then are we really knowing if we're doing the right thing or not? How do we know we're doing the right thing? By picking option D over option B, if option B may not create a situation where rent stabilized buildings are being bought up by developers and those people are being evicted and displaced or and/or that rents are going to go from $1,500 a month to $2,000 a month or $2,500 a month when someone moves out because that building is going to have a $5,000 a month rent. So there's a lot of things going on here and I just, I just think that this needs more, more, more work.
If I could, councilmember, I'm just coming back to, I know you made a comment about the roundtable and who was consulted as part of the process. I think the reason that it consisted of, of who it did was largely looking at people who have built, who are building projects in the city to understand what those constraints are, what the, how the decision-making process about project feasibility. And so that's why they really focused on, on that group of, of stakeholders as opposed to a broader group of input. It was a very specific focus to try to understand what makes a project feasible.
Right, and I get that, but then you're hearing one viewpoint and then we're just focusing on those options and how it affects them, but not how it affects the rest of the city. So I see the consultants are shaking their heads. I would love to get some feedback from you on, on some of these questions.
It took me, hi. Took me a minute to follow your original concern, but I was thinking, so, so not to bring Berkeley up, but Berkeley did deal with this issue. So they adopted a, a new demolition ordinance trying to fold it in and preserve the rent stabilize, stabilized number separate from the inclusionary units in the new project. Did I say that correctly? I think that was roughly it. Yeah, so I mean, there's an example where that is being considered. I'm not sure though, that the options, when you look at them, I mean, they all are going to have repercussions beyond new construction, but I'm not sure it's really that much about rent stabilization. It's more about who's being served.
Well, it's about affordability.
Right.
I mean, that's the bottom line.
Right.
Whether it's a rent stabilized unit or not, it's about affordability and what we're, what we're seeing is that new units that are being bought, that are being built that are market rate are, are not affordable, you know? Except for the inclusionary.
Except for the ones we were.
Except for the inclusionary units. We didn't, we didn't see rents go down when we built 2,000 new units, new market rate units. We only saw them go up and we only saw rent stabilized units going up as well.
Right.
Because of it. So are we giving comments to, I'm sorry?
Yeah, you're, you're jumping in.
All right, I, no, I would just say that I don't, I don't know that this is ready yet for prime time. I would like to see a little more study on this and, and especially the idea that, that what fits in a commercial zone may not be the right thing in a residential zone. And so I would sort of like to see a, an approach of, is this, what, what works residential, knowing that we want to maintain the character of our neighborhoods and that, and, and also protect our rent stabilized buildings that are there versus commercial corridors where right now we don't really have a lot of residential, where we can, where we can bring in more. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I can appreciate the complexity around this item and the timing, given how much is in the housing element itself, 116 strategies we have to move forward and that this is about really calibrating to zip, but I hear the councilmember asking for some more time and consideration, maybe some more information back on this. And I think in hearing from the community concerns too, the, the thinking around how all of these different pieces around zip fit together, I think could be a helpful, you know, piece of information that we come back with at some point. We know that there's other items that are going to be a part of this bigger housing element discussions. It feels like a really big piece of it, but there are many pieces along the way, so just to name that. But to speak to the concern or the, the idea that this is about calibrating with zip, what I wouldn't want to see happen is the inability to produce some of the smaller-scale projects. I think under the zoning improvement program, we're hoping to see a new range and variety of housing typologies all across the city. And I think we wouldn't want to preclude the ability to create those small-scale developments. And so I am concerned around the inclusionary housing ordinance being applied to units or projects 10 and under as onsite, just in terms of what I've seen as part of this study itself. Because again, if the bonus will apply to bigger projects, bigger projects can become more incentivized and then that's what we're left with. So that's a concern I have just in looking at this item. I do understand the need to align with state law and to Vice Mayor Heilman's point, I've got concerns around those costs, but I think another part of this housing element strategy that we're unfolding is the ability to, for the city to differently subsidize projects, whether it's, you know, a per-unit, per-door sort of subsidy, overall project subsidize that ability to do that. And then we also have funding from La Casa that'll be applied to different projects. So the ability for us to help fund and finance those deep subsidies that'll create more affordability, I feel confident in, but not seeing it as part of this strategy, I think, makes complex the idea that we can continue with a 20% inclusionary housing ordinance as we have, you know, throughout our city's history and be able to say that we're actually creating that affordability. I think in seeing that a $6,000 rent is what it will take to create that affordability onsite is a concern. And without understanding what the future of the amount of housing will have and how, you know, if, if we're going to hold this idea that rents aren't lowered because there's more units, which as a region, we will see that change, but we're not in a place where the region has catalyzed that level of housing to see that change. So we're stuck in the situation we're in. I just feel like we're having this conversation in a vacuum and that makes it a little challenging to understand the ecosystem we're sitting in. I'm going to go to Councilmember Erickson to jump in here.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. And I want to thank my colleagues for sharing some of my concerns and some of the issues I have. I agree that this item is not cooked yet for prime time. I want to thank the staff for their diligence, but I think we need to send this back to study housing capability at all levels, not just these certain percentages, specifically identifying what's maximizing the housing. I mean, 6,000 plus dollars, what was the amount? I can't. What was it, Andrew?
Sixty-six thirty.
Sixty-six thirty? That's a lot of money and no one's paying for it. And to what my colleague, Councilmember Meister, is saying that there's only so much you can build at those levels when you're trying to hit these numbers. My question for staff is, how many four-unit projects do we actually have in the pipeline?
Four-unit inclusionary or for-sale inclusionary?
I mean, based off of what I was reading, please correct me if I'm wrong, one unit or an in-lufy for four units, I mean, is the city just seeing people wanting to build four units only in, across the city?
We do have a breakdown within this study. Let me bring that up before.
That would be great, because I think my problem is, is due to the, the constraints in the financial market, is people aren't building those types of projects anymore. People aren't building in that way because it doesn't work out financially. And I think specifically, we're having problems with even, I mean, we're having problems with 100% affordable housing projects putting shovels in the ground. I mean, Weatherly still doesn't have a shovel in the ground. Well, maybe they have a shovel in the ground. Thank you, I forget, you literally live right down the street. But I mean, still nevertheless, we still have 94 units of 100% affordable housing, not even on the market yet. So that's a problem because it's not financially working out and I think what we have before us is going to make it even harder. I'll go back to staff on that. Yeah, sure.
I can answer your question about the number of four-unit projects. It's not, it's kind of combined in a bigger graph and so I have the detail.
Sure.
We looked at the data for projects that were approved by planning from 2019 to 2024 and of those we have six four-unit projects. Most of those four-unit projects were built on lots that were about 6,000 square foot. So in some ways it's a function of lot size as well and we had six projects in that time period.
So six, over six years, five years?
Yeah, five years.
Okay. Hand over fist here, people are being like, yeah, let's build four units. So I mean, I, yeah, go ahead, please, yeah.
Jessica, could you also mention the entire pool of small projects that we have out of that graph? Just for context.
Do you want to, do you want to introduce that? Yeah, I, can you tell me? I don't.
It's, it's, I think, it's fine. I think, I'm not ready, I, I'm not prepared to move this forward. I actually would love to give direction to send it back to staff to analyze other scenarios where inclusionary zoning can pencil out with lower market rate rents that would be affordable to a broader population. I, I specifically think, uh, what we're, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, but, and also I could be wrong. As my colleague Lauren looks over, right, or she goes, yeah. But the planning commission's discretionary authority is seven, not four. So the planning commission wouldn't even be dealing with that, right?
Sorry, are you, just to clarify, are you talking about the projects that would be coming?
Yeah, just projects in general, like this, a four-unit project's not going to the planning commission.
Not, not typically, no.
Not, I hope not ever.
I mean, they shouldn't, if they're just requesting the, the standard development permit, then no.
Okay, thank you. I was just, that's why I was like, wait, I got a little confused there. So that, that's my recommendation. I, I won't be supporting this item in its, in its current form. I think we need more information. And frankly, you know, I was a little shocked by the anti-development bias kind of in some of the reports, that if we're aiming at developing and growing our city, we shouldn't automatically hinder the process. And I feel like that's what we're doing. So those are my comments and a question, Madam Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Heng?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the, the reality is in WeHo, rents are high, supply is tight and building across the county, across the region is pretty expensive to begin with. Inclusionary zoning benefits a select number of future low-income residents, an important and critical effort. But as a city, we need to think about current WeHo renters who are on the verge of being priced out, who are housing unstable, and how are we going to make sure that they stay in our city? And the majority of, and there are a lot of units in our city that are 10 units and below. And we need to create more affordable housing and inclusionary zoning housing to keep people in their homes. And most of these projects, they're built by smaller developers, sometimes local developers and not multinational corporations, so to speak. So, and with these very challenging times, with the rising cost of inflation, with the cost of, with tariffs, with high cost of goods, construction is very expensive. And I'm seeing, I'm believing that, you know, based on the report, that requiring a must-build onsite might hamper developers from willing to make an investment in our city. For, for, like I said, for units that are 10 units and below in West Hollywood. So option D, I do believe is the most valiant option that has been presented to the council, but I also believe that it's, it's a good start. I think additional studies need to be done and additional options need to be provided to the council so that we can make a better informed decision. But I do appreciate the time and effort that went into this study, so thank you very much.
It doesn't sound, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree that we obviously need more information and we're not prepared to make a decision tonight. I, I didn't see anything in your report that was intended to hamper development. I, I know that some of my colleagues are suggesting that the inclusionary program is causing market rents to be 6,600 or 6,000 something, but let's think about what would be done or what would happen if we got rid of the inclusionary requirement altogether. What would the market rate units that are built, what would they be renting for? The same amount. They rent for what the market dictates, not for, you know, whether we have an inclusionary program. I, I agree, we don't want to have an inclusionary program or any kind of program that hampers development, but the idea that getting rid of or limiting inclusionary is going to result in the market rate unit suddenly going down to 4,000 a month is just not how the market works. And I think it might be useful for us to get, you know, a little bit more information from our consultant about how you came up with these recommendations. I, I disagree with my colleague's, Councilmember Meister's comments that the, the development and the inclusionary units, et cetera, that new development dictates and causes our existing rent control units to go up upon vacancy. Again, that's dictated by the market, not based on the fact that there are new developments being built where they're charging 4,000 or 6,000. I don't think that has any really, any real effect on what a, an existing landlord does. I'm much more concerned about the state incentives and the bonuses and SB 79 causing the demolition of our rent-controlled units because developers are going to find it financially feasible to tear down a 20-unit building and build a, a 70-unit building with all of the bonuses and incentives that they now have. So I, I'm much more interested in finding a mechanism to preserve our existing rent stabilization, rent stabilized units rather than, you know, preventing new development and, and adjusting the, the recommendations that you have on the inclusionary program. So, but I agree. have on the inclusionary program. So, but I agree that we're going to have to put this off and get more information. I also disagree that, I don't think we should have separate standards for commercial versus residential areas, because the state law bonuses are going to work the same way in commercial districts as they do in residential. So we can have our own standards, but the developers are going to be able to take advantage of what the state law dictates.
Councilmember Erickson, you wanted to jump back in?
Yeah, and I just want to make it very clear to the public that I am in no way, you know, stating that I want to remove inclusionary zoning, because our housing work, because I do see its advantages for what we're doing. I want to find a way to get it to pencil out. And I know that's always the problem that we are having, is how do we push on one end to get to the other? And so I just want to be very clear here that that's not the goal. I think the goal is, is that the market is sadly dictating where we're at, and the rents are so high, but the cost of construction, which won't be the same forever, and the cost to build right now is so high that everything else is in flux. And so I want to make sure that if we have a 20-unit building, we're getting our 20%. But I want to make sure that, as our friend said, have you ever seen rents go down on West Hollywood? I mean, it's a very apt comment in that way, but how can we make sure that we're helping, not harming? And I think by doing more information and getting that, hopefully, we can lead the way to understand that better.
Yeah, I'll say, do you think there's an underlying assumption that the, bearing the cost of creating that inclusionary zoning gets passed on to the rest of the renters in the building, and that is what is contributing to the rise or that price level at the market rate? And that may be the case. And that's where my commentary comes from, about recognizing what ways we, as a city, with the support of regional funding that may be newly available, maybe through the creation of, you know, the sort of revolving loan funds that we see popping up around the country, can create mechanisms that support and don't undercut a developer's ability to build that housing with the inclusionary zoning we need. I'm not certain that we have explored all the sort of financial tools that are necessary to create that without inhibiting, especially at the scale that we're talking about. So that's, that's sort of where my concerns are at. I saw Councilmember Heng put his hand up, and then I'll go back to you, Vice Mayor, to close this out.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, for me, it's all about finding the right balance in terms of the market rate as well as inclusionary housing. And I think option D is a good start. And hopefully, if, if the council's willing, that more options are brought back to us. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Heng.
Yeah, just to respond to your point, Mayor, I think we also shouldn't lose sight of the fact that when the developer complies with our inclusionary ordinance, or they put in affordable units under the state program, they also get incentivized with significant density bonus, so they can build more market rate units. They also have the opportunity to get concessions and other exceptions from our zoning ordinance. So they are, they are getting things as a result of including the affordable units.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I believe the, and I'm curious, the state law alignment is something we can move forward tonight. That doesn't feel like it's a contributor to any of the ongoing exploration that we needed, by aligning the income thresholds with state law. That's something we can approve tonight as council.
Correct. Yeah, we would bring back any ordinance required changes for that.
Okay. So I think that piece, we're comfortable moving forward. Sounds like it's, we have to do that.
That'd be fantastic.
And then, are you comfortable with the direction that you've heard from the many of us tonight? Or should we sort of go through and reiterate that through a formed motion?
It would be great to have a summary, just so we know exactly what additional information you'd like to bring forward, just to make sure that we don't miss anything.
Certain. Please.
One thing we might want is to have maybe a mini-study session with our consultants so that we have a better understanding of how they came to their conclusions, that these projects would be feasible.
Yeah, I'd be very open to that.
Yeah.
Councilmember Erickson?
Do we?
Well, I heard one thing about the commercial districts. I know Councilmember Meister was interested in that. I think there was concern about the, particularly the five-to-10-unit category, and whether having a requirement to build and a partial in-lufy, whether that was too impactful on small developers. Those were a few of the things I heard.
Yeah, and I was looking at analyzing other scenarios where staff can, I'm sorry, analyzing other scenarios where inclusionary zoning can pencil out with lower market rates. So I think we need to look at all of the items versus just a few. So we need to further study all the income options, all the different, although other different scenarios to increase inclusionary zoning and what we can, not just specific subsets of what you were putting out in your staff report.
So rather than the five, 15, five, you're looking at a different mix?
Yeah.
That would create a lower market rate threshold, is what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Well, again, maybe we can have our consultant talk about whether that would affect the market rate units in some way.
Right. Was that all the direction?
And I think we, we look into different groups and nonprofits that can really provide a different set of information. The Turner Center is a policy lab that specifically has the resources to address this, but there are others as well for a study session that we might want to look into. So not just one, but many aspects.
Maybe the Leskin Center.
Oh, the Leskin Center is another one, yes. Thank you.
And you're going to, and you're going to look at the idea of the unit, replacement units becoming small projects?
For the conversion of nonhabitable space into units later on, and whether we can require something under that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second with that spattered direction, but I think we captured the thoughts that remained.
So just for my clarification, we are moving recommendation number one.
Correct.
And then we provided further direction to staff regarding a potential study session, looking at commercial districts, concerns with the various categories that this was put into, and then adding other groups into that study session to provide further guidance to the council. And conversion of nonhabitable units to habitable units?
Nonhabitable space.
Okay.
And I think also, the Vice Mayor brought up, looking at how do we do all this and also protect our rent-stable, existing rent-stabilized units?
I think that's going to be a different item.
Well, it might be a different night, but that, I would, I would still say that that's something we should be thinking about.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure we got everything.
Thank you. We'll move forward.
Thank you. Inching our way forward. Do we have Councilmember Meister and Councilmember Heng votes? Thank you. Okay. We moved item F2 to consent, so we're looking at item F3, San Vicente Boulevard between Melrose Avenue and Beverly Boulevard, left-turn movement study. I believe, Councilmember Meister, you had some questions on this item? And we have one public commenter as well.
I don't think you have to give a report.
Yeah, that's a lot of staff for one item. We're so sorry.
Jesus.
We do have Anita Gasswami signed up to speak. If you'd like to prepare, keep it all moving forward.
Let's bring this down here. Hi. Anita Gasswami, resident of West Hollywood, and I'm speaking on item F3, the left turn study on San Vicente. I'm a resident of that specific area and have been a resident there since 1987. So prohibiting eastbound left turns would be, would reduce egress from that neighborhood. I am, the proposed solution does not address the real problem. I was also Transportation Commission when this, when the study itself was presented, and we had the discussion. There were many other residents from the area that were speaking about this as well. The foundation issue is not, you know, turning on to San Vicente. Foundation issue is the San Vicente Speedway. And this is something that was raised at Transportation Commission and, and here. And so reducing that egress ring, that doesn't really address anything. I think that in terms of the efforts of the city, I would actually look at focusing, I'd look at pivoting, right? Because we talked about the world changing, right? Because this is what happens. It evolves. I would recommend actually pivoting to implementing more speed, more ways to address the speeding that's going on on San Vicente. And look at that. I think if you look at that, you will get, you know, a more safe street, because that's something you're really interested in. I know that. We all are. But look at that versus actually reducing and putting in the reduction of the left turns. And lastly, if you do decide to go with this, put it in on a temporary basis. That's kind of the fallback. Do something on a temporary basis so that if it doesn't work, you can, you can take that out. And again, focus on what really matters, which is the San Vicente Speedway, reducing that and making that safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister, do you need a presentation on this?
No, no, I just had specific concerns. And I understand why you wanted to, you know, prevent people from going east and making a left turn, because there's a curve. And that curve prevents you from seeing what's oncoming southbound traffic. The problem is if you put all these barriers in the center, then the people who are actually going south on San Vicente and need to make a left turn into their driveways, because there are residential properties on the east side of the street, they won't be able to get home. So, and I've seen people making lefts to go in those, in those pockets that you're talking about on those Dorington, Rangeli. So I don't know how you put in some barriers and then prevent people who are just coming down, you know, to go home, make a left, and then they can't because there's a barrier now. Because you have the barrier there to prevent the people from making a left turn onto San Vicente. Or am I just not understanding what you're talking about?
It's challenging with that.
Which is possible.
Yeah, no worries. That's why we're here. This is John Gilmore, Engineering Manager, and I have Richard Garland, our Principal Traffic Engineer. And we also have our colleagues from Kim Lee Horn, who prepared the study. And to make sure I understand the question, so the, the gist of the item here today was to come from the accident that occurred in December 2024 of vehicle collision that was from vehicle movements that were north-south on San Vicente and left-turn movements with the neighborhood. So the item's direction was to consider restrictions of left-turn movement. So that, that is what the purpose of the study is. And so therefore, what the alternatives are laying out are all those recommendations of different ways of putting turn restrictions to that left-turn movement.
Right, but the, as the speaker, Anita said, the problem is not necessarily the left turn, it's the, it's the speed. It's the speed in which people are going southbound on San Vicente Boulevard. And then the people coming out, you know, from the neighborhood, turning left, they don't see them, and then accident. I understand what you're saying. What, what I wasn't maybe not, maybe understanding is, you gave a bunch of different options, and one of the options seemed to me to be like, just like, you know, make, put a barrier so you can't, you can't make a left and go northbound on San Vicente. Now, I could be totally wrong, and if that's the case, then I, then I'll keep quiet. But that's, so I wanted to speak about this. That's why I didn't want it to just go, you know, because I wanted to understand exactly what you're proposing here.
Sure. Yeah, so accidents obviously have lots of different factors that could cause them, right? Speeding is a big cause of accidents, but it's not the only cause of accidents. You know, distracted driving is a huge component of accidents. And so distracted driving could happen at 15 miles an hour. It could happen at 60 miles an hour, right? So, so there are lots of different factors. It's not only speed. And as far as the various alternatives, they are there to specifically prompt this type of conversation, right? We, you know, we're showing these options to generate all of these views and ideas. And it's not, the option two is not the one staff recommends. And, you know, community concern at the commission being was that same similar guise of option two would create a corridor. And so you would, you know, infer that people would try to drive faster on those because of the lack of intersections that would now be there. So it's not the staff's recommendation, but we like to produce lots of concepts to show those pros and cons between them.
So the option that you're recommending, what, so?
Is 1A, yeah.
Is 1A. And so is there a permit, is there a barrier that you're planning that would prevent someone that's going north, southbound from, you know, like coming from Melrose and they're, and they're, they're going down San Vicente because they want to go home, and they live on the east side of the street? Are they able to cross to go into their driveways?
I've put 1A up on the screen for everyone. So what 1A recommends is, or provides as an illustration of potential left-turn restriction, is a left-turn restriction for those heading east out of the neighborhood, turning north on the San Vicente, which is one of those conflict points of strikes that would occur, right? Primarily, you know, from the summer accident we saw, right? So all the study accidents that occurred in the report were the same type of movement, which was one vehicle coming out, one vehicle going north-south or vice versa, right? And so left-turn movements. So here, the preservation still remains about heading northbound on San Vicente and turning into the neighborhood. But it's, those, those vehicles will have the Q lane that they are staging in, out in the center of the road. So it's a different type of left-turn movement than those coming out of the neighborhood. So that's what alternative 1A is, is providing.
Okay, but I'm just asking about southbound, coming from, say, Melrose or Santa Monica, and someone's driving down southbound on San Vicente Boulevard. There are buildings, there are apartment buildings on that street, on the east side of San Vicente Boulevard. They have driveways. Are they going to be able to go?
No.
To get into their?
They would not be able to turn left at these intersections.
They would not be able to turn left?
Correct.
Where they can turn left now.
Yeah, that's right. That would be the restrictions that are now being placed if you choose to go forward with these alternatives.
Like, I understand the no right turn, I mean, the no left turn, coming, going east, coming from Dorington or Ashcroft or Rangeli. But, but if you're changing the bar, the center, so that someone who's, who's just driving down San Vicente, going southbound, can't get into their, their, their homes, it's not a street where, you know, they're not at an intersection, basically. They're, San Vicente is just San Vicente.
Yeah, that stretch would have a different right.
Yeah, yeah. Southbound is that way, because if we're trying to prevent the eastbound left, if we were to open that plane so people heading southbound could turn left east into their neighborhood, then we're opening it for the people coming out of the neighborhood with only a sign to prevent them from turning.
Right. And I understand that, and that's why I asked for this not to go to consent. I think that's going to be a problem for those people who live in those buildings. And it's not like even that they're like single-family homes. There are apartment buildings with multi-family housing. And, and the only way in is that driveway. They can't go from, from Norwich and get to their homes. San Vicente is the only route. Whereas, whereas the people who live on Dorington and Rangeli and Ashcroft can go the other way and go down Robertson if they wanted to.
Yep, that's right. So the, this item is imposing restrictions. So that is kind of the name of the game, right? So options could also be not to provide any change and keep the access open, or look at one of these alternatives. So those are all for your consideration.
Or you can have a combination of those right turn arrows and also maybe a, a street light or something that, that, you know, changes or changes the intersection so that it's actually?
That's option three.
With a, with a street light. That's another option, right?
Yeah, so option three, I'll put them all up on the screen at one time here. That is option three, a signal that would provide that U-turn ability that you're referring to.
I mean, I agree, it's not always speed, but it is the curve.
I mean, I agree, it's not always speed, but it is the curve. It's, it's the way, it's the curve of the street that is, that is a big factor in the accidents there. I've lived there a long time. I've lived there since 1998, I can tell you. Because you're, you're coming out of that neighborhood and you cannot, you cannot see oncoming traffic. And the oncoming traffic doesn't really see you till it's too late.
And to your point, if, if we just put the right-turn-only signs and did not paint the median, then people could still make those left turns from southbound. It might be tempting for people to ignore the right-turn-only sign and go left anyway. That's why we're putting that markings out in the median, but?
Well, maybe there's a way of doing it with the, without putting, without changing everything physically. Like Anita said, maybe you do a pilot and, or you have other signage. But I just don't, I think, I think it's a problem if you're not going to let people get into their homes on that east side of San Vicente.
They'll be able to access their homes, it's just, it's by a different route. And I think that's, their current route through the neighborhood, turning left, may no longer be viable as a mechanism of transformation to serve the safety need. I was curious about if, if option three was recommended, or another option, why not the traffic signal?
You're saying, why, why did we not recommend in the item from four to three?
Yeah, why is it an option but not the recommendation?
I'll tell you, it's going to increase cut-through traffic in the neighborhood if you have a traffic signal there.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, traffic is always a challenging topic. There are many competing voices, right, that lots of desires. And we're all fighting for limited real estate to use it for various purposes. So, it's always, it's always difficult to find unanimous consent on things, right? And so, in the staff report, you hear some of the regurgitation of community input that was received. And, you know, there are members of the community who are wary that the signal will promote cut-through traffic from Robertson. And that would be counterproductive to the neighborhood traffic management program that they had, you know, become part of with the medians and, and speedlumps. Others, others do view the traffic signal as an opportunity to make movements that they want to make, right? So, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Thanks. I just want to talk community outreach for such an important street regarding the Speedway. Did you send a mailer to all residents in the affected area?
So, let me see, we have that in the section. So, for community engagement, we advertised the Transportation and Mobility Commission meeting that took place in September. We went through the Communication Division of the city through their process of notification. So, they circulated notices in the local papers, social media posts, and their email list served. And as well, staff contacted the West Hollywood West Neighborhood Group to put out a notice to their membership.
Great. Does the West Hollywood West Neighborhood Group know every member of West Hollywood West?
No.
Exactly. So, you did not send a mailer to every resident in the adjoining area who could be impacted by such an important change to a major thoroughfare or Speedway, as one of the members of the public said?
We did not.
Did you do a door-to-door campaign or make sure, huh? Did door hangers, but did you go door-to-door or talk to residents and homeowners? It's a very walkable neighborhood, I've done it many times myself, to engage in them in a certain, specific way?
We did not.
Did you find or do a statistically valid survey about how many people actually supported this change versus those that don't and those that might not know enough information about it?
The only things we did were those that I just mentioned.
Exactly. But I'm saying it for a point, so the answer is no.
Correct, yeah.
Great. So, I am just gravely concerned that there are going to be members that come to the city council and are astonished that we would do such a thing over such an incredible thoroughfare and a entry point to our city. I mean, we should all be worried about that. I mean, look at what's going on with Fountain. Oh my goodness. We sent a mailer, we went door hangers, we held five separate council votes. We've invested millions of dollars. We've done multiple rounds of community engagements. And you haven't done any of that?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm just shocked. I mean, like, Councilmember Meister, this is your bread and butter. I mean, the fact that we're going to change San Vicente Boulevard, a Speedway, of which I too completely agree with you, but to treat two streets that see deaths and accidents in different proportions differently because one is a rich homeowner area, neighborhood, versus one that is lower-income, fully-renter, and massively dense, is the very version of hypocrisy that people are trying to overcome here. And to even begin to say that it is not proves my point. I mean, if you, I can guarantee you that some of these changes that would want to be made will impact people's quality of life. My colleague's completely right. But some people might want them, some people might not. And so, to start doing a pilot program, very important because you never know. But the fact, the fact that, that, that I was rate over the coals for suggesting we finalize a process to make sure we do all of these things is hypocritical. And so, I would hope in the future, and that was the goal of my item before, that this doesn't happen. But if we say community input, what's good for the rich is also good for everyone else. And it is insane that we would treat things differently because people who can afford to have homes in the city that pay taxes, I love it. But the people that rent and are on the east side are consistently, no, I'm not done yet, bombarded by the sheer fact of accident over accident on a Speedway in the same way is hypocrisy. We must do better. I'm insulted that the way that we treat different parts of the city. As an east sider, I am offended.
Vice Mayor Hellman, you had your hand up next.
Well, I, I don't know how to follow that, but I will say that tonight, we, please, I, I will say tonight, we approved an improvement to the La Brea intersection without an extensive process, without doing door hangers. There are differences between these projects. What we're talking about here is putting up some no-left-turn signs. We're not talking about a major reconfiguration of the road. We're not talking about removing parking. We're not talking about changing the roadway. I mean, again, going back to the item, as I said, there are different processes that are appropriate for different types of infrastructure changes. And I think that we need to recognize that. And the notion that this is some reflection of economic bias is, is not accurate. I think that, first of all, there are very expensive condos on Fountain. And there are renters in this neighborhood. So, this has nothing to do with economics. This has to do with a tragic accident that occurred and a number of accidents that occurred on San Vicente. And is there something that we can do to restrict turns to improve safety? Just like we did on Fountain where we made changes to lights, put in crosswalks, put in crossing without a, an extensive process because those were things that could be done quickly and easily that there was a great deal of consensus about. Going back to the specific proposal before us, I support the idea of making turn restrictions here. I am concerned about Councilmember Meister's concern that it might, in some way, affect the ability of people traveling southbound on San Vicente to turn left and get into their homes or their apartments. Can you explain what you would recommend for those people who are traveling south, who live on the east side of the street on San Vicente? How would you recommend they go home, other than changing their routes so that they go north on San Vicente and make a right turn? And I will say that I have changed my traffic patterns when I'm going home and, so that I don't have to make left turns. It's, it's much safer for me, even though it sometimes takes me a little bit out of my way. So, what would you recommend for the people on the east side of the street?
Well, I think what you're saying are all valid reactions, right? That, that would be what would happen, right? If, if we were to implement the turn restrictions, it would then require a change in behavior. You know, that, that's what we would be doing, right? So, if we, if we do move forward with the alternatives that do not include a signal at Ashcroft, then you would need to go to the next street to make that turn. Or you'd have to just start your route in a different manner to come northbound. The signal option three does allow the U-turn if you want to still head south. But you're right, like, these restrictions do require changing the path.
But putting a signal in would turn Ashcroft into a, a cut-through street, and I don't support that.
If, if I could make a suggestion, okay, so, so there is the left turn at Rosewood, right? But the problem is you can't, between four and eight, you can't make that left turn because of the traffic, of the restriction to slow down traffic through that neighborhood. But I think that if you want to do this, you would have to allow the, the, the left turn at any hour on, you know where I'm talking about, the, the left turn that goes where the, you know, the bike path is over there and everything, you know, they just redid that. And, and allow a U-turn as well so that those people could go make a U-turn just a half a block further than they would have had to go. And then they're on the, but, but right now, we have, like I said, we have a restriction from four to seven where you can't make that left turn. And that's when people are coming home from work. So, what I would suggest is that we look at this as a pilot. You know, don't make a permanent barrier in the middle of San Vicente, but, but something that can be changed if it doesn't work out. Do the right-turn signs at the, at those streets, right? The no-right, I mean, sorry, the no-left-turn signs. And take off the four-to-seven restriction on, on that, on that?
Rosewood.
On that, on that, yeah.
Yeah, Rose, ideas about changes to Rosewood can absolutely be part of your direction as council.
Yeah, because that, that way, they only have to go a half a block. Because otherwise, you have to go all the ways down to San Vicente. And, and, and any kind of, you know, to Beverly. And, and then it's a mess because then you're dealing with a ton of traffic.
Councilmember Erickson?
Yeah, thank you very much. I have a quick question. Steve, how long did the La Brea changes take? I'm sure that that resulted in what, four accidents into that hairsty, the, the hairstyling salon? But how long has the La Brea signal change been in the process for? It only took three, four accidents into trendsetters, if I'm not mistaken?
Hi, Council. Steve Campbell, Deputy City Manager. I believe the La Brea project started several years ago. We had quite a bit of issues with the city of Los Angeles because the east side of La Brea is actually, and the north side of the intersection, it gets very complicated. And John can really speak to the details on that. But the left-turn signal took quite a while to plan and get everything in place.
Great. We are changing traffic patterns, impacting a lot of things. Don't we need to do a sequo study? I know the answer, but you can say it.
We would not have to do a sequo study for these relatively minor changes.
But they could be of grave impact to the ways in which cars impact exhaust, everything. So, we don't have to do that?
Are you talking about La Brea? Are you talking about this project?
Talking about this project. Well, we have cars maybe going through different neighborhoods or stopping and idling if there's more traffic on San Vicente?
That would be more of a planning question, but I don't think something like this would really require a sequo document.
It's okay. I'm now being flippant in my remarks, not towards you, but to prove a point. Additionally, I would also love to add, I'm happy with the direction that we'll go making forward the motion. But I would love to ensure the motion includes a mailer to everyone that would be impacted by this on the west side of these changes, outlining everything that's been going on to ensure that they are fully engaged and know about everything. And I hope my colleagues would support such an important community engagement to make sure that everyone knows that we're changing a major thoroughfare in our city.
So, what, so shall I make a motion?
You, you may. I?
I'm sorry.
I hear you suggest a pilot, and what they've recommended are ballards and paint. So, I'm confused about what a pilot would look like. But I hear you suggesting some abilities to activate a light differently at the Rosewood intersection. And so, maybe that is part of the pilot rather than the actual left-turn restrictions themselves. It seems that we're confident that the left-turn restrictions are necessary to create that safety on the corridor. But what may not be, or what may be necessary is the left-turn restriction at Rosewood being gone. My concern with that going away is that we're going to get influx of neighborhood traffic that I think would otherwise go around the bigger block eventually. And I think that's the sort of learned behavior shift that we're speaking about that needs to happen. And so, to the point that Councilmember Erickson's making, there's a change, your route's going to change, but here's the ideal route, I wouldn't want to encourage people to just find a different pathway through your neighborhood in order to make that turn back onto San Vicente. So, that would be the piece I would be interested to pilot, is that restriction.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be going into the neighborhood. They'd just be U-turning on, within San Vicente. So, they wouldn't be going into the neighborhood to change.
Which is still a concern I would have about creating another jam on that pipeline of how people move as they're waiting to U-turn, rather than consciously knowing the only real option is to go around the entirety of the block. And I think that's sort of what allowing traffic flows through these bigger corridors is meant to do, rather than stymying a tiny little U-turn at peak rush hour.
They're going to do it anyway. They're going, they're going to do it anyway.
I, I don't disagree, but I'm suggesting that we pilot that restriction lift to see?
Oh, yeah, I would, I would have this all.
And then we may have to further restrict it, frankly, if it's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was going to suggest, is that the whole thing be a pilot, right? So, if you don't have to do with permanent, you know, cement, if there are things you can put into block, you know, without it being permanent, and, and do the no-left-turn signals and allow the left turn four to seven. And before we do anything, we notice the people on both sides of San Vicente, as well as Rangeli, you know, that block of Rangeli, Ashcroft, and Dorington, that is off of San Vicente onto, you know, to Robertson. Because they would be the most impacted by it. Also, Sherborne. Because people come down there. So, you might have to do all those streets between San Vicente and, and Robertson in terms of some kind of notice to let people know. And, and then, of course, San Vicente on both.
Is that the motion?
That's a motion.
Okay.
And you include the citywide mailer to all the residents included?
Citywide, I don't think that's necessary.
I mean, it's impacting everyone in the city.
It's not impacting everybody.
You say Fountain doesn't, but San Vicen, I take San Vicente more times than I care to admit. I mean, and I live on the east side. All I'm saying is what's good for me is not for thee.
But you wouldn't be affected if you're coming down San Vicente.
Well, I'm, everyone's affected. Someone over here is affected, someone over at Melrose is affected. I mean, you can't have one argument for one street and not for the other when no one lives near the street that's being impacted. I mean, it's hypocrisy. So, you can do a mailer to the impacted neighborhoods, that's fine. But when Joe Suzy comes over and they live over on the east side and they're doing whatever they got to do on San Vicente, and they say, why is my time going? Why am I stuck in traffic? Why is this happening? I wasn't notified about this. I deserve a veto vote on this project. It is just the point. What is good for me, but not for thee. And that is the critical nature of making sure the public process, of which I know you care so deeply about, is included.
So, I think that notice and the pilot will work as a good start. Yay.
And just to be clear, the noticing that you said before, not a citywide notice?
Correct.
Although you could put it in the Berkeley Press.
Thank you. Did you, John?
Did we get a clear motion on that? I just want to make sure we walk away knowing exactly the direction.
That it's a pilot project, that it would prohibit the left turns coming out of the neighborhood, and that we would be lifting the no-left-turn restriction at Rosewood at the four-to-seven hour so that people could U-turn and get to their homes.
Okay, so, alternative 1A, proceed, and then revision to Rosewood. Got it?
And neighborhood notice.
Okay, thank you.
As long as letting Westwood?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. We are on item F4?
I think we're deteriorating, is what you're saying. We have F4, F9, and B13.
F4, thank you. Okay, I'll turn this over to Councilmember Erickson, Councilmember Hang, to do a presentation.
Sure. Do you want to go first, or you want me to? Okay. So I know everyone that was here before with the concerns about the word streamlining are certainly here in the audience as well. But specifically, we have been hearing a number of reasons for directing staff who are already doing this, but finding ways to conduct a review of the city's business permitting processes, to expedite and streamline these approvals, tenant improvement processes, business signage regulations. People are building things, putting things up, investing the money, and to only be handcuffed by stuff they weren't aware about or didn't know about, for lack of a better word. And as well as the sign ordinance to align with current business seats and the city's standards, and to direct city staff to return with these recommendations. I mean, what we are ultimately seeing, and thankfully, the city is doing a lot of this work initially, is to come up with a whole host of ways in which the business permitting process can be overhauled. It is, I worked to get one business open from the time I was the mayor pro tem to literally, when we were in Sacramento for equality California, like, April of this last year, the hand-holding that I had to do, thankfully, staff, you know, tried, but is, this person spent hundreds of thousands of dollars just wasting time and money. And now they're open, and it's an amazing business. That is just one example among many. So this item just gives direction for staff to take the tools that they're doing, but to go even bigger, to come back with us. And as we saw, the Chamber of Commerce is supporting this, and this is important to helping make sure businesses can open here in a timely, efficient, and affordable manner.
Thank you. Councilmember Hang, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, mayor. Now that I'm on the right item. This item directs staff to review the city's existing businesses permitting process to make it more efficient, modern, and responsive. The goal is to reduce costly delays, especially for small businesses and tenant improvements, while maintaining WeHo's high standards for safety, design, and community character. It calls for modernization of signage regulations, many of which were written many years ago and don't conform to today's times. And they may not reflect current design practices, technology, aesthetics, or even accessibility standards. This item basically, this review builds on the city's permitting enhancement initiatives, which I think is going to be great to help our small businesses. It includes the Permit Navigator Pilot Program, over-the-counter plan review process, guaranteed second opinion processes, administrative permit processes, and even permitting workshops. So overall, I think, and I want to thank my colleague for bringing this item forward, that this item supports small businesses, it cuts the red tape and reduces expensive delays, modernizes outdated signage rules to reflect new technology, creativity, and accessibility, improves customer service experience through the Permit Navigator, same-day reviews, and clear staff timelines for our small businesses. It strengthens our economic vitality and reinforces WeHo's role as a creative industry hub. And it balances efficiency with design excellence and maintains the city's distinctive aesthetics. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I know we have a speaker on Zoom, and a citizen position slip as well. Let's go there. Genevieve Morell. Go ahead, Genevieve.
Vice Mayor, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Genevieve Morell, West Hollywood Chamber. Streamlining has lost its meaning. We've talked about it so much in my 25 years in West Hollywood that I don't think anyone understands what it means anymore. But let's revisit the meaning of streamlining. It's to make an organization or system more efficient and effective by employing faster or simpler working methods. That's the simple of it. And you said it perfectly, Councilmember Erickson and Councilmember Hang, the process needs an overhaul. For years, we've heard from business owners, especially small and independent operators, that the process of opening, expanding, or even making simple tenant improvements in West Hollywood can be confusing, costly, and time-consuming. Every delay represents lost revenue, lost jobs, and missed opportunities for investments in our community. And of course, not just our city process, it's the county, it's utility companies. They all play a role in these delays. We really appreciate the steps the city's taken already, including adopting our ideas from our Small Business Initiative, or the concierge-type Permit Navigator Program, over-the-counter plan review, administrative improvements, but there's still so much more we can do. And this initiative builds on that foundation to make the process more efficient, transparent, and business-friendly. Chamber fully supports the city's intent to evaluate and modernize the permit project, including signage regulations that are outdated, aligning with state laws like 8671 and best practices from other cities. Let me give a simple example. A business came into my office, and he says, you know, Genevieve, says, this decal cost me $15. He said, but the city wants $500 for me to put it in my window. These are the kinds of things that small businesses just, we have to find a better way to help these businesses be able to be seen, have their signage be seen, be able to put things out. Sandwich boards have been banned for a long time. We need to find a way for businesses to be able to be seen and heard, and get through the process quickly and efficiently, and less costly. Collaboration to engage is always welcome.
Thank you, Jen, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't, I can't do this time. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
And a citizen position slip?
Yes, Victor Olmachenko provided a citizen position slip in support of this item.
Terrific, thank you. Vice Mayor Heilman, I saw that you were ready to speak.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for bringing this forward. I support the general idea here of trying to make the process more efficient and more effective. Not only are delays a big expense for a business trying to open, it's also lost revenue for the city, and it is lost income for those people who could be working at the business. I do want to mention that some of the signage regulations, such as sandwich board signs, there are, there's a reason why we don't permit those in the city, in large part because of the impediment that they have on the sidewalk for pedestrians. So while I support improving efficiency and looking at our signage regulations, there are reasons why we have some of those regulations, and I don't think we should be just scrapping those in the guise of efficiency. But I don't think that was the intention of the item, so I'm fully supportive of it.
Thank you. I'll also add, I'm supportive of this item. I think what my, in looking at this, it really names many of the initiatives that are already underway. So I didn't feel that this was really bringing anything new to the forefront. What it actually is doing that brings me some concern is that it's giving council the ability to get involved in staff's work plans in a different way than we may have been. So I just, I want to name that as a concern, because I think this stuff was already underway. And I appreciate hearing that there's a Small Business Council and Task Force, and the many different plans that were named in this item that are under review. So I think what I would be interested in seeing as part of this direction to review the ways that we're working to make our processes more efficient is where road bumps are happening, where misalignment on sort of staff's considerations, and where maybe we can help further direction may look. And so if there's, you know, sort of a range of considerations being made, how can we help move that direction forward, is my question? Because I see a long list of things here, and I don't want to muddle that work. The consideration around signage was the most exciting piece of this to me. I do think there's a lot of missed opportunities, just in hearing from businesses, some of the ideas they've had to promote their business through, like, a mixture of logo, artwork-driven logos and that sort of thing on the facade of their buildings, some things that are more, you know, mural-focused, big art pieces. I think that is something that we may be preventing or not allowing without many hoops. And a thing that I've heard more loudly than a number of the other sort of streamlining considerations here, so I just wanted to flag that. I think overall, staff's doing an incredible amount of work to make sure we're modernizing our processes, making sure that we're in communication with businesses, and really trying to troubleshoot on a, you know, business-to-business basis why things take so long. And so often, it's truly not our issue, it's other issues that we help project manage, because, you know, SCE or other actors aren't project managing these things like our city is doing to help support the businesses. So I just wanted to sort of name that piece. I think raising attention to the work that our staff is doing is an important aspect, though, because I don't think businesses often know how much work has been going in behind the scenes to correct this, and how long it often takes. So I just want to appreciate that opportunity we have tonight to recognize how much work is happening, ask or invite council into some of the support work to help direct or prioritize differently, and then recognize the opportunity we may have ahead with the sign ordinance specifically. Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I'm supportive. I mean, I think this is just a continuation of what we started with the Small Business Initiative a number of years ago. And then the chamber had the Small Business Task Force, and they came out with a presentation of a number of suggestions as to what we could be doing to help them streamline and get businesses up and running faster. One other thing we might want to think about is, like, let's, now let's take, let's take all of these items that have been floating out there for the last, I don't know, I can't remember when we did the Small Business Initiative. I think it was eight, eight years ago, maybe eight or nine years ago, or seven, whatever. But take a look at everything that we have put forward over the last, you know, seven or eight years, and see where we can streamline our initiatives. And then maybe prioritize, staff will be able to prioritize it so that it doesn't create additional work, that it's really just figuring out what takes priorities, and then move along from there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Erickson, back to you.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I agree. I don't want to be involved, but I am. And I hate to say it, that, I mean, the amount of businesses that call me, the amount of development projects that call me, the amount of many, many projects that call me and say, city staff is doing X, there's, I always take a 50-50% truth which way or another, is overwhelming. I mean, and that's the intent of this item. I want to get out of that. I don't want them to call, because I want there to be a clear process. And I see different businesses treated differently. When SCE is involved, it's always complicated, so that's a whole nother story. You're 100% right there. But if staff was doing their job, which I want to say that they are, we still, we would not be seeing businesses take two years to open. And that is my problem. And we do need to have a full overhaul of what people are doing. And I hope that through this process, we can create a clear guideline that says, this is everything you got to do. I mean, when I tell people that we have the Public Health Department at City Hall to help move their things forward when we need to, they're astonished by that, right? They don't even know it's an option. And so just even communicating that, people go downtown to the county to start moving it. And so we need to do a lot more, and that's, my goal is to not have businesses call me to say that this is happening. So that is the overall intent of what I'm trying to get here.
Councilmember Hang?
Thank you, mayor. I agree with my colleagues, and for me, at the end of the day, time is money. And we have to make it easier for our small businesses to operate and to open in our city. As the vice mayor said, that's revenue for our city, to fund our social services, to fix our potholes, to pay our deputy sheriff's officers. So we have to do what we can to make it easier for businesses to operate in our city. And this item, you know, as many of you set up here, brings us in alignment with our Small Business Initiative Plan, with our 2024 Economic Study, with, even with our ESAT Initiative, which was, I think, started by my colleague, Councilmember Erickson. And it also brings us in line with Assembly Bill 671, which makes it easier to, say, open a restaurant or a bar. So I think that this is a good step forward for our city to help our small business community. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or direction from council? Okay, we'll move to item F9. The continued exploration of additional public restrooms in West Hollywood, implementation of a public restroom pilot. Vice Mayor Heilman, I believe you had some questions from this. Councilmember Hang, if you'd like to be ready. We do have, hold on, before, we do have citizen position slips on this item, so maybe we just do that, and then we'll go to your questions. Apologies.
No problem.
Yeah.
Did you want me to do a presentation, or?
We have Victor Olmachenko.
To speak?
Yes.
Oh, so we do have a speaker?
Yes.
Okay. If you'd like to introduce the item, then go ahead.
All right. Thank you, mayor. Colleagues, tonight's item continues our work to ensure that West Hollywood remains a city that truly serves everyone, residents, workers, visitors, and those in need. The proposal will be for us to direct staff to explore options for additional public restroom citywide, starting with a pilot program in our mid-city area that would test modern, smart restroom technology accessible 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. We've made a real progress so far. West Hollywood Park now has a 24/7 restroom, a 24-hours-a-day, 78-per-week restroom, and the renovated facilities at Plumber Park are on their way. But the gaps remain, particularly along our mid-city corridors where foot traffic, nightlife, and service requests are the highest. Smart restrooms use automation, stealth cleaning, and remote monitoring to ensure sanitation, safety, and accountability. They've been successfully deployed in Long Beach, Beverly Hills, and at many metro stations across LA County. These are not your traditional restrooms. They're modern, self-contained, and data-driven pods. This pilot gives the city an opportunity to collect real data on usage, maintenance, and community satisfaction before making a long-term investment. It's an equitable and practical step forward that aligns with our goals of supporting public health, safety, and dignity for all who live, work, and play here in West Hollywood. Public restrooms aren't just about convenience, they're about compassion, accessibility, and quality of life. They're about ensuring that no one has to choose between basic dignity and a clean, safe environment. I'm proud to bring this item forward, and I look forward to working with staff and the community as we explore innovative, inclusive, and inclusive solutions that help keep West Hollywood clean, safe, and welcoming to all. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll invite Victor Olmachenko to speak.
Victor Olmachenko, longtime West Hollywood resident. Is everybody ready for some potty humor, some bathroom humor at this time? I will not be that racy, but I just wanted to share, thank you for bringing this item forward, Councilmember Hang. I spent almost a month in wonderful Italy, and I gave it an A-, and why was there a minus? The lack of public restrooms. I couldn't believe it. I tried to be ready for the day with my daily constitutional, but as the plumbing gets old, and you get on a train, or you get on a tram, and you try to go to the Vatican to say your prayers. And I went to the Vatican, and I went to all the museums. The first bump in the road, and I'm ready to use a public restroom, and there weren't any. And even when you went to the historic columns and the Roman Colosseum and that, and there, I have to do a plug for historic preservation, I'm telling you, the Italians preserved their history. People go and pay 20 euros to see a column in some rubble. It's amazing. But when you want to use a restroom, you better have coins. So I reviewed the report, and seeing the throne, the Portland blue, and the urban blue, I know that the throne is used at the end of the exposition line in Santa Monica at Fourth Street in Colorado. And I am grateful to our city for having a restroom. Like, when I'm coming home in the evening on my bike from the ocean, I really am grateful for the West Hollywood Park public restroom. So whatever we can do, and this is about tourists, and this is about people coming into the city. And I know that if you know where a bathroom is, you can use it, but something in the mid-city, I was thinking, maybe in a transit zone like the busy Fairfax-Santa Monica intersection, or other places closer in the Rainbow District. I think we should look at this pilot program, and I thank you, Councilmember Hang.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Erickson for a quick question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question, I guess I can ask either one of you. I thought we were already doing this. Helen? Aren't we already doing this? Oh, I, this is a great time to get an update, so I just, yeah.
The direction from the council, the last time we were here in regards to restrooms, was to finish the renovations at the Plumber Park restrooms, and then to community outreach with communities, see if they were interested, and then come back. I think this pilot program is looking at mid-city more so than east or west side.
Okay.
And we are a little bit away from finishing up the renovations at Plummer, so.
Thank you. But to your point, Councilmember Erickson, I've been a part of subcommittees. I think where this discussion is taking place, the idea about bringing more bathrooms to the city has been long-held. And I think the idea was to get through the renovation at Plummer Park to do a reevaluation. I appreciate the desire to just get the conversation started on what's next. I think that's totally fine and fair. And I see that this is budgeted for 2027 cycle, so we're a few years away from that reality happening anyways, but...
Yes, thank you. And for some odd reason, I thought this was an item from staff for some weird, I don't know why, I, did you?
I think it was Councilmember Meister during COVID.
No, you, yeah.
Councilmember Shine and I were on the homeless
Yeah.
subcommittee, and that's where we talked about having these restrooms.
And that's where I picked it up.
Yeah, no, there's been a lot of people got to pee, to Victor's point. So I'm in support of this. I appreciate that it's giving leeway to allow these things to move forward. But to your point, Madam Mayor, it's how do we look ahead in that way? And so if the council's moving in that direction, I'm gonna go for it. And I, apologies, I know Vice Mayor Heilman had comments as well.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I appreciate this being brought forward, but I think it is not really going to solve the problem that I believe it is partially designed to solve. And I think part of what it's designed to solve is the problem of homeless individuals, particularly in the mid-city area, peeing in people's doorways. I think we've all gotten complaints from businesses in that area of having to clean up every morning because people have been urinating or defecating in and around their entryway. I think we can place one of these in, you know, at the Holloway Park, or we can place something at Crescent Heights or at Fairfax. But the people who are doing what the businesses are complaining about are going to continue to do it, because they either don't care, or they don't have the wherewithal to make it to a public restroom. So I'm, while I appreciate this, I worry that this is not going to solve the problem, and I also worry about it potentially becoming a magnet, which I don't think we want it to do. So I'm not going to support it, even though I, having a lot of public restrooms available to people is a great amenity, but I'm worried about the consequences of it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hing?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I do appreciate your concerns, and I understand where all my colleagues are coming from. Yes, a lot of businesses have contacted myself, and I'm sure my colleagues as well, that we have, you know, a lot of unhoused or whatever individuals defecating or urinating at their place of business. But I'm looking at this item, this pod, or whatever you want to call it, beyond just servicing our unhoused community members. I look at it as also servicing our other community members, our Amazon delivery drivers who are driving. And we've all seen the TV documentaries or on the news how delivery drivers have to have, carry a water bottle in their vehicle because they are not allowed to take a break to use a restroom. So if they see that a restroom is readily available on a commercial corridor such as Santa Monica Boulevard, they'd be inclined to stop by. And also, I'm looking at this more of maybe people leaving our nightlife, leaving our bars, nightclubs, and restaurants at a certain hour, and they have to use a restroom. And instead of using the restroom in someone's bush, or instead of using the restroom, maybe urinating in the Sal Garriello Veterans Memorial, they see a public restroom there that they would use. And as far as a safety issue is concerned, with regards, you know, there were several options that were listed in the, in this item. The throne option is completely self-contained. They have security sensors and measures in there where the doors open automatically after 10 minutes of usage. And beyond that, with this particular company, with this particular pod, it's self-contained, it's self-cleaning, so if that's something that the council's willing to entertain, it is an option among the three that were presented in this item. So I'm looking at this as an option for our unhoused individuals, community members, but also beyond that, as an option for the entire community. Because as Mr. Olmachenko said, the more restrooms, the merrier. Because when I got to go, I got to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister?
Yeah, I'm happy to support this item as a pilot program, but I would also suggest that maybe there be a check-in, since it's not till 2027, that, you know, I mean, you know, I may be gone, but, you know, maybe in some, you know, six months before, they have to start looking into things, or, you know, putting money, to reassess the situation, because things change. So that would be my only additional request, is that there be like a check-in with council before things move forward, to see what the environment is like at that time.
I think per the budget cycle, that would probably come as an item that's getting folded into that '27 budget outlook, so it'd probably be then. But if you're asking for something additional, that's, you know, a directive that comes back a year from now or something.
Whatever works where
Okay.
Works where it's not putting staff in a bad position in terms of not having enough time then, you know, to deal with it.
I don't see in this item a specific recommendation, but was that what you were pitching for, Councilmember Hing?
That is correct, Mayor. I believe the objective is, if the council's willing to pass this item, then staff will come back with staff's recommendation, in terms of what they feel is best after they do their analysis, which company to go with, what is most cost-effective, where the placement would be. So that is where staff's expertise would come into play.
Terrific. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yeah, I did use the throne model in Beverly Hills when their restrooms in one of the parks were closed. And it's very nice, but I believe you have to have a cell phone and download an app, which might be another barrier for people. So that's something that should be looked at by staff if they're considering that model.
You can use a tap card as well. That's what their technology allows.
And it, I don't, it's okay. Okay. If you want to tell us all the details about throne.
I want to talk bathrooms. Yeah, so the throne, actually, you can either have tap cards, or you can use an app, or you can also hand out to service providers. They can hand those out in the community to different members of the community as well. So there's several different options on how to access them.
And the timing will give us enough time, because who knows how many other ideas will come online between now and when staff will work to implement this, to pick the right provider per
Correct. We would have to do, go through a government procurement process.
Okay, terrific. Are there any other questions or concerns? Remember, last time we talked about public restrooms up here, I got quoted by the Portland Lou about peeing my pants in public, as can happen. So I didn't want to make that whole statement again, but it can happen. So I always appreciate the availability of public restrooms, and I'm excited to explore it more. Okay, I don't think there's any other questions or comments? Great. We have reached excluded consent calendar, and we do, oh, we haven't had that vote all the way in. There we go. We do have an item on excluded consent, Vice Mayor Heilman. It was item B13, the memorial in remembrance of lives lost to suicide in LGBTQ community.
I was going to apologize to Helen for keeping her so late, but I think she needed to be here for the previous item, so. You know, I guess my concern about this is the same concern I raised about the previous item. And does it really make sense for us to spend money on a one-time memorial that may get lost in the shuffle and not really appreciate it? And wouldn't it be better for us to be spending money on an annual prevention program, or annual mental health program to deter people from committing suicide in the LGBTQ community? So that was really my question here. How much is this going to cost, and where would we put it? And does it really make sense for us to do this?
Helen Collins, Public Works Director, and I have Philip Takun here with me, the new facilities. Phil Services Manager is his first go tonight.
Welcome.
So there was a lot of discussion in the different groups in regards to would it make more sense to have an actual memorial, or put the money towards some type of prevention program? That was discussed. I think the group came to a consensus that it would be valuable to have some type of location where we could actually have a memorial, but also provide resources to the community at that same. So kind of the combination of education as well as some type of recognition. The cost at this time is unknown. I think we would have to spend more time looking at it as a group, because as you might have seen in the staff report, the recommendation was that they would only recommend some type of memorial, and not so much a memorial as a monument. If we met some of the criteria, making sure we're involving the correct groups and correct organizations, and all of them, all the organizations that participated, we had a suicidologist, we had several different community organizations that actually deal with suicide on a daily basis, and they all recommended that, no matter what we do, we need to make sure that we have resources available at that site. So if we're going to move this forward, then that is something they wanted included in that particular project.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, when we do memorials, we think about a physical location. And I'm just putting on my professor hat for a moment, but we do the same thing for people who make donations to the school, for scholarships. But some schools have started to make that a virtual thing, where instead of having a physical place in the park, we do something on our cable channel on an annual basis, recognizing those lost to suicide and having those resources. So maybe that's another option that can be considered for some of these recognitions and memorials that they take place in that way, rather than a physical location that somebody has to go to.
And that actually was a discussion in some of the groups, that they are going, some other memorials or remembrance locations are going to more of a virtual concept than to have a physical memorial. So that's something that we could take back to the group to look at as well, when they come back with their full recommendation.
And then it's very easy to tie it to resources and other, yeah. Okay.
I would be supportive of that. I think that makes more sense, because, you know, in order to have those resources accessible, and you could have something like, almost like a World AIDS Day
Scroll.
Something looping, but then, you know, access to phone number, 800 numbers, or whatever, whatever else.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay.
I'll move the item with the understanding that that kind of virtual memorial will also be considered as part of this.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll take a vote. All five. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that gets us through excluded consent, so we'll go on to our final public comment. Do you have anyone signed up? Nope. All righty, then we are at the very end of our agenda, just council member comments and meeting attendance reports. Who would like to begin? Okay, Councilmember Hing, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as my meeting attendants are concerned, I attended a variety of events in the city of West Hollywood. I also attended Halloween. I wanted to thank all of our staff who set everything up, stayed very late. It was a very enjoyable evening. We had up here Shaggy, Pink Pony Club, we had our superhero Batman.
Is it Shaggy?
It was Fred. Oh, Fred. Fred, sorry. And of course, we missed Councilmember Meister, and we wish her speedy recovery. She was there in spirit, so thank you to our staff. Halloween was for several hours, and then by 4:00, 5:00 AM, it looked like nothing happened on the street. And that's the magic of West Hollywood. And magic is hard work, because that's our staff working around the clock to make that happen. And I'd also like to recognize National Native American and Alaskan Native Heritage Month. November is National Native American and Alaskan Native Heritage Month, a time to honor and celebrate rich cultures, histories, and contributions of native peoples across the United States. California is home to the largest population of Native Americans in the nation, and has been, has long been a place where native communities can build strong connections, preserve their traditions, and have their voices heard. This month, let us all recognize the enduring strength, resilience, and achievements of native communities, past and present, and reaffirm our commitment to learning from, uplifting, and supporting native voices and traditions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Go vote. Tomorrow's Election Day. Turn in your ballots. It's super easy. I got asked by a couple of members of the public today if we could post signage in the elevators, because if you're taking the elevator from the ground floor up to the whatever, you never see that a vote, yeah, wherever it is, sorry, you never know that there's a vote center right there. But if you're walking, you see all the A-frames. So if there's any signage for poolgoers and stuff like that, it would be helpful.
Okay.
So that would be wonderful. I know you don't manage it, but the county does, so whatever they could do.
But I do help them manage the wayfinding.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do. We appreciate it.
But the lovely facilities team to get that.
Thank you. You know, lots is on the line across the country, so please go and vote. Additionally, I want to congratulate my friend and my mayor, Young Elected Official of the Year, just aged out of the Young Dems, welcome to that club, but inspirational and truly just so well-deserved. I was so glad to climb through a river, woods, no grandmother's house in sight, but I still got to Elysian Park to honor you. And it was all well worth it to see your incredible speech, which made me really emotional. So congratulations. Additionally, I want to thank staff for the grants and schools program increase, that they worked on increasing things from $3,000 to $6,000 for the '25-'26 school year. Will be really seen in our schools here, and I'm really appreciative for my colleagues for supporting that. That was an initial item of mine, but that additional 40K investment will help our schools, who are really feeling it at this incredibly stressful time. And then additionally, thank you for my colleagues for unanimously approving the items that we had on here tonight, to move these really critical items forward, to get things moving back in our city. And with that, that's all. And I attend to lots of meetings and community events.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister?
Well, as you know, I didn't attend a lot of meetings. And I just want to thank my colleagues and the community for their support. For those of you who don't know, I had a tear in my retina, and it's no fun, that's for sure. And it's going to take a while to heal, so excuse the sunglasses. I'm not being cool, even though I may look cool. I'm not trying to be cool. It's just, light is very, bright light is definitely a problem. I just wanted to remind the community that the Plummer Park ad hoc subcommittee meeting is on Wednesday, November 12th, at 5:00 PM at the Plummer Park Community Center, Rooms 5 and 6. And we hope to see you there. And I'm going to keep it short, because it's late. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, you're always cool, Councilmember Meister. I attended Spinning Sunset up on Sunset, and it was a great event. I also attended Halloween, and it was another magical night. And I want to thank our staff, our public safety partners, and everyone who came out, and the community for supporting the event. I also held an event with a group of Loyola students who were learning about West Hollywood's history. So those were some of my activities. Thank you.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Yeah, it's huge. Thank you for an amazing Halloween night, how special it was to see our city lit up in such a way. It was really incredible. We just thank everyone so much for your support in making it happen. And yes, really special. I wanted to also remind everyone to vote. I wanted to acknowledge that we raised the intersex pride flag on Intersex Awareness Day. It was an early morning flag ra- intersex pride flag on Intersex Awareness Day. It was an early morning flag raise, but it was a really special moment for the city and for the intersex community as well. And so you'll see a new flag across the city in that way. I've heard neighbors acknowledge the, you know, the rise in visibility of the coyotes in the neighborhood. And just walking down to the, the meeting tonight, folks walking their dogs were sort of reminding people to keep on a lookout. I really appreciate that keep a lookout attitude, and wanted to just remind people to do the same. And I know we'll be making sure that there's some other messaging coming from the city, too. So you don't have to get surprised, but we're constantly aware that we exist in a realm where coyotes may find us in these neighborhoods. And we have to be careful and keep our pets very safe, too. Thank you, City Manager, for naming all the many ways that people are able to contribute to helping keep our neighbors nourished in this very, really devastating time. I was happy to see NCJW really close by us, accepting donations, so anybody's able to do that. I don't actually have any other attendance to report of the required attendance we have to report. I do not have any for the last couple of weeks. But I appreciate the meeting tonight. Thank you all so much. It has been a long one. But we did cover agenda items from multiple meetings, so just remind us of that. Thanks, everyone, for getting through it. We'll adjourn tonight's meeting now. The November 3 city council meeting's adjourned. We'll see you back here Monday, November 17, 6:00 PM. And hopefully before then, we'll see you at the AIDS Monument opening on November 16. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.